Good evening, everyone. The time is about seven o'clock on Wednesday, October 18th. Welcome to the meeting of the Village of Tuxedo Park Board of Trustees. Before we begin the meeting, I would request everybody to stand for a moment of silence. I'm asking for this moment of silence to respect and to honor and never to forget the slaughter of innocents, particularly in the state of Israel, as well as for everyone to give a silent prayer to for the safe return of the some 200 or so hostages that are being held in Gaza. So if we could all just pause for a moment. Thank you very much. You can sit down now, Kathy. All right. We'll take the roll call before the pledge. Elizabeth, would you take the role, please?
Mayor Citron?
Present.
Deputy Mayor Casker?
Present.
Trustee Brook?
Present.
Trustee Shara?
Participating remotely.
Thank you. And trustee Shaw.
Thank you. Now, unfortunately, we'll have to stand, not unfortunately, for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America through the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for So as indicated on the schedule or on the agenda, this is my opportunity to speak to all of you in the room and to be assembled on Zoom. And until today, I had my opening remarks were going to be a little different, but I don't know how many of you received a missive from the former mayor with respect to issues involving the police department. In that missive, he made certain claims that I had plans to do certain things with respect to the police department. And in that missive, he claimed that he received information from police officer Dan Sutherland, who is the president of Bowman's Benevolent Association of this particular village. And he said that he got that information from Dan. Well, Dan read the missive from the former mayor, and he has allowed me and agreed that I should read this statement to the record for the public generally. Hi, Mark. David McFadden put out an email with my name on it with inaccurate information. I am not behind that in any way, and I do not agree with it. You did not propose anything to me. Just ask me how I felt about a few things. And you specifically told me you were not looking to get rid of midnights. So I don't know where that's coming from. I asked him to refrain from including me in this type of email in the future. So there you have the response from the source that former Mayor McFadden quoted. With respect to this particular incident, I have no other comment. I will take questions at public comment if anybody has any about it. I only want to say that I understand that the former mayor likes to stir the pot, but from my perspective, the only goose that's going to get cooked in the pot is his. So with that, I'll move on to more substantive matters. We have a very long agenda tonight, which is indicative of the initiatives I am proposing in the village. As I mentioned at our first meeting, I saw the Board of Trustees, the four trustees' role as one of advise and consent. With respect to the initiatives I am proposing, I'm looking at them as proposals that should be discussed in great detail, probably over a period of time, to allow for reflection by the residences to the proposals, to allow for open discussion regarding the proposals. And it's only after we've had full and complete discussion of these various initiatives will a resolution be presented to the Board of Trustees to vote yea or to vote nay with respect to the proposals I'm making. I've asked the village attorney to speak tonight on one of the proposals. And in addition to speaking on the proposal with respect to the Board of Education taking over our elections, I've also asked him to speak on the issue of public referenda, because I firmly believe that the public should have a voice in determining major decisions regarding the governing of this village. And I am firmly in favor of putting questions to the public, possibly in March of next year, with respect to those issues which I think the public should speak on. So if whether or not the Board of Trustees votes in favor of or against a particular initiative that I'm making, I will ultimately request that it be placed on a referenda so that you, as the voters, will have the final say as to whether it becomes law. So with that being said, I'll take a seat and we'll continue with the agenda. At this point, is there anyone who'd like to speak? If you would, please feel free to take a stand up and use the mic if you need. Mr. Reichardt. Good evening.
For those who don't know me, I'm Jay Reichardt. I would like to speak. The first and shortest, there are some items in new business that have to do with engineering issues and specifically, I believe, IONI, which is a sewer issue. For those who don't know, also a town councilman. And the town is dealing with IONI issues of a similar magnitude to the village. The town is about to go out the RFP for sewer repair contract. I've made sure to put into that contract the language required to allow other municipalities to diggy back on our contract. So essentially, it will be a 52. It will be a short draft to engage in a contract. The other item I'd like to speak to is item M, the retention of a certain person as village special counsel. Now, I'm not qualified, I'm an engineer, I'm not qualified to speak to whether or not the legal acts makes any sense. We've heard other people say it might not. And I don't know the attorney, so I assume that this person is qualified. This person is a close personal friend of one of the board members. Tell me if I'm staying around, maybe I'm.
Can you hold on one second?
Yeah.
John, are you working on the mic? I don't know if that's what you're pushing buttons for.
No, I.
It's hard to hear.
The mic is working. So maybe just speak a little louder, Jay, if you can.
I don't know. I can't.
I don't know.
So who was your close personal friend?
Is Gilbert not a friend of one of the board members?
You were talking about.
My life partner, yes.
Okay. Not the nature of relationships, not completely clear. However, it is a very close relationship. Without suggesting anybody is doing anything illegal or morally against the Constitution. The generally, it seems unseemly that someone with that close a relationship would be in the employ of the village in a matter like that.
Thank you. Anybody else? Yes, sir. Please state your name for the record and feel free to speak.
Sean Madden, of the One Tower Hill Loop. I was going to comment on this issue, but I will. I am a lawyer. I know Lisa Gilbert. She's a terrific lawyer. She's taken this case on, as I understand, a fully contingent basis that cost the taxpayers nothing and could potentially get a very substantial recovery on behalf of taxpayer. I believe the board has a fiduciary obligation to pursue that taxpayer money. So I respectfully disagree. I was happy to hear you talk about advice and consent and open discussion, Mr. Mayor. Seems like a delicious irony since just weeks ago, this board unanimously approved the composition and leadership of our important boards in the village, including the VAR. Yet just recently, you unilaterally and without advice and consent, as far as I can tell, without any discussion, purported to remove Mr. Lynch as chairman of the bar for reasons that are unknown. But this didn't happen in a vacuum. Mr. Lynch was here tonight, publicly accused you of, quote, undue employment and engaging in inappropriate conduct on behalf of a personal friend of yours who has been before the bar and who I might also add has been engaged in litigation with the village and, best I can tell, has repeatedly flouted our code. Mr. Lynch further alleged that the mayor tried to, quote, bully him into resigning. And when he refused to do so, that you committed to removing him from his position, which you appear to have or at least claim to have done. I expect the mayor to address these troubling allegations, but my question is for each of the board members, and it's about process, not the substance of these allegations, which I have no firsthand knowledge about. But before I get to that, I do want to say, I took hours today to watch the recent bar meetings and especially the ones involving this troublesome applicant. And I must commend Mr. Lynch for his professionalism and patience in the face of what can only be described in some cases as abject rudeness and inappropriate behavior. With that said, I submit that the public interest demands that any discussion of demoting or removing a member of the VAR should be held in public session. You have the right to go to executive session, but its counsel will confirm it's discretionary. And as the Committee on Open Government has opined, the ability to go to executive session to discuss personnel matters is primarily for the privacy interests of the person being discussed. Mr. Lynch doesn't want to get railroaded in private. He prefers a public discussion. And so there is no reason to take that discussion to executive session. Our sunshine laws, the open meeting laws, take their name from Justice Brandeis's very famous quote, that sunshine is the best disinfectant. And so my question to each of you trustees is, do you agree that the demotion or removal of any member of sitting member of the bar should be subject to public discussion and not be done in an executive session? If you disagree, please explain why. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Madden. Anyone else like to speak publicly? It is later, but Kathy, if you want to speak now, you're free to speak now. What's your preference? And you can always speak at the end of the meeting as well. There are two public comment sessions. And if you would take the, use the mic, it might be easier for people to hear you. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Peter Van Zandt. I'm a native of Tuxedo Park. And ever since I've been a little boy, I've been very interested in our lake. I know the history of the lake quite well and what is going on in the lake. I've asked for a stocking of the lake for this year, probably, hopefully, November, as the culmination of 10 years of stocking. The main reason we stock the lake is because, one, trout do not reproduce in our lake. And number two, because we didn't stock the lake for a decade. We have two creatures in the lake that are called phytoplankton and zooplankton. Phytoplankton are plants, zooplankton are little animals. Back in the 60s, Congresswoman Smith introduced herring into our lake. Before that, it was just regular shiners for bait fish. And over that decade, the herring have multiplied into billions. And what was happening was that when herring mature, they eat zooplankton, and they are no longer eating algae. Without the trout in the lake, this allowed the phytoplankton to explode the population as the zooplankton were eaten by the herring. I watched the lake deteriorate for a decade. And then in 2011 and in 2012, the Juilliard pond lakes finally succumbed to the very poor conditions in our lake at the time. They were planted in 1910 by the Juilliard family. And I realized I had to do something. There's nothing that's being done, nothing's being addressed as far as what was happening in our lake. So with the help of Kathy's brother, who is the manager of Eastern Coastal Waters in the U.S. and some wonderful people from ASA, I got a lot of education over a year on the phone, and my assumptions were that we had a fish population imbalance. And that's exactly what was going on. So in 2013, I went to a lot of the people in the park and raised over $12,000 and started to stock the lake with 16-inch trout. The result was pretty dramatic, and it happened a lot faster than we all thought. But instead of the lake being a brown or green colored water all summer long with high pH ranges, the lake cleared up, which is what I expected it would do.
Blue.
It turned to blue, yes. And it showed that the trout were starting to nibble into that huge population of herring that were eating your zooplankton that were supposed to be eating the phytoplankton to keep algae under control. So the balance is way off in the zooplankton area. So I've been stocking now for 10 years. And one of the things that rural art had always had designed was that in the old days, before the lake was sold, the Tuxedo Park Association and the Tuxedo Club would share the bill as far as what causes stock the lake. And now, at an area where I have balanced the lake, the lake is clear for 10 unprecedented years. The pH is remaining fairly stable and normal.
But not blue.
Not blue lately, but we've got a balance. We put at least a 50% dent in the herring population in the lake. And I noticed that by a couple of things, by watching and observing the cormorant, how many do we get in the spring? And if you get a lot of them, you realize you got a lot of herring. Very simple. That's one of the observations. The other is, I like to go out at sunset and watch the surface of the lake to count the herring schools. Now, they used to be huge. Now we have numerous ones, but they're much, much smaller.
Dad, let's do what I just had. What's the little bit? Dad, if you want, I'm going to try.
And I have. That the balance which we now have will definitely be capped and it will stay that way so that we will not have to stock the lake.
And not have to put chemicals into it.
Thank you, Kathy. For at least another, I'm going to say four years, which would be nice because then we wouldn't have to think about budgeting for them every year. And that's what I'm proposing and trying to do at this point in time. It's the benefit of everybody, because when the lake was deteriorating really bad and we had brown colors, the lake was brown for the entire season, from spring, summer, and fall, and cloudy, I realized that the next thing that was going to happen was we were going to hit the formation of blue-green algae, which did occur, but it didn't occur in large amounts. So that, and blue-green algae, by the way, if you get it really bad in the lake, poisons your drinking water. Now, the lake is your biggest asset, and I just strongly recommend this.
Mr. Van Zandt, we've given you about as much time as we can.
Okay, that's enough.
You're free to continue at the second round of public comments.
Thank you.
But we will continue this discussion because we have a trustee who's going to talk about stocking the fish.
Okay.
And we'll have a serious discussion about that from trustee Shara.
Yeah.
So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for your opinions. Yes, Mr. Lynch, yes.
Good evening. My name is Ryan Lynch. Please send me a West Lake report. So I understand you wish to discuss removing me as chair in a closed-door session. I would like this discussion in a public forum as do many in attendance and on Zoom. The line was taken from you, but sunshine is by far the best. Questions I have, one, what was your cause? Second, why would I still remain on the bar as a member, not chairman, if that was just cause to remove me? And third, it is entirely inappropriate for you to put pressure on this bar and show favoritism. The same rules apply to everyone equally. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lynch. The only comment I have is that I never requested your resignation.
That is a bold, base lie. And if you requested, you demanded it, so that is a correct thing.
Sir, we'll address this at a further date. But the only remark I have is, I did not, I did not ask you to resign.
A point of clarification.
Yes, yes, miss.
Which is resignation as chairman kind of separates resignation from the board. Are you talking about chairman resignation or a board resignation?
Do you repeat that in a second?
Resignation as chairman, he might have asked.
He asked me to resign as chairman while remaining on.
And I refute that, but we'll discuss that further. All right, anybody else? Who's raising their hand?
Mr. Pace.
Mr. Pace? Go ahead, sir.
Yeah, hi. Dear members of the board, so my name is Wilkie Pace, and this evening I would like to speak about our experiences with the building process in Tuxedo Park. We purchased our lot roughly in 2018, and construction did not begin until 2022. Our approval process took approximately three and a half years. It was a confusing, inconsistent process. We were volleyed between boards and were not given clear answers until the end. We had to make numerous, numerous enumerations to satisfy both the boards and our neighbors. In comparison to our past experience, we have had a pleasant transition with the current bar. Answers and suggestions are given directly with reason while still following written guidelines. During our process, we were also given strict guidelines and recommendations for outdoor materials. We were asked to incorporate materials to make the home look like it's always been there. For example, we have incorporated the finest materials such as slate roof, wooden windows, tuxedo stone, limestone, and bluestone. While expensive, we did not question it because, like other Tuxedo residents, we feel a responsibility to preserve the quality of homes and in turn uphold the character and charm of Tuxedo Park. We can all agree that Tuxedo Park is a unique and beautiful community with picturesque estates and homes. What sets it apart from other towns are the guidelines by which we hold our community members responsible to. The current bar team is doing a phenomenal job in maintaining the standards of the park while also ensuring a smooth and seamless process for its homeowners. Thank you for your time this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Pace. I see one other hand up, John. Mr. Sarkon?
Good evening, Mayor and members of trustee.
Yeah.
I only need one.
Okay.
Good evening and hello to members of the public. My name is John Sarkon. I'm an attorney, and I represent Claudio Guazzoni and his family, and also him as public advocate. We had been, we had been engaged recently in some protracted litigations where we had, we had offered to allow the trustees who were unopposed to be let out of the lawsuit, but the lawyer insisted that they stay in, causing unnecessary legal fees, I'm sure. But what I'm trying to say here is, I understand that there is a desire for revenge and for retribution, and I would caution you, Mayor, specifically, from advocating what I firmly believe, and I've done the research to back this up, is your duty, fiduciary duty, and also legal obligation to appoint or terminate anybody who is in the employ of the village that's by appointment. That's not subject to collective bargaining. I've written a letter. I sent it to you directly. This is directed to you, Mayor. And also, I copied the Board of Trustees and Ms. Darty in her capacity as treasurer. So I would, I would encourage you to take this seriously because my client certainly does not wish to see, continue to have to litigate to get the village to comply with law and regulations that are, that are out there. So with that, I bid you farewell and wish you all a very pleasant evening. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Sarkon, you did it within three minutes. Next, we have Mr. Guazzoni.
Can you hear me?
We can, sir.
All right, I'm going to read a letter which was sent to the trustees, and I'm reading it into the, into the village minutes to memorialize it. And it might go over the three-minute mark by a few seconds. And I kindly imply, Mr. Casker, not to get hysterical if I cross the three-minute mark like you did last time. This letter serves as an official complaint with a public advocate and foil demand regarding the illegal hiring of an attorney, Ms. Gilbert, to represent the village of Tuxedo Park in connection with a recent filing with the New York State Supreme Court in a case that was disposed of a month ago. Dear Mayor Citron, this letter is from my attorney. This firm represents Claudio Guazzoni De Zanet individually and as a resident and taxpayer and his capacity as public advocate for Tuxedo Park. The Public Advocate for Tuxedo Park is a non-for-profit, non-governmental organization and acts as a community watchdog, which also publishes a periodic public affairs blog that is available to the entire community. I write to you concerning a serious matter of great concern to the public advocate that may also be of concern to the taxpaying citizens of Tuxedo Park regarding the conduct of an attorney, Ms. Gilbert, who has improperly and without legal authority filed papers in State Supreme Court stating under oath that she represents the village of Tuxedo Park when she didn't.
Two minutes.
Please be advised that pursuant to the New York State Village Law, only you as mayor have the legal right to hire and fire not only Inter Alia, the village attorney, but anyone who is hired to represent the interests of the village of Tuxedo Park. You should be aware that the highest court in the state of New York has opined on this matter, and it is clear law. Additionally, a consent to change attorney does not carry over from one mayor to another. If wished to proceed with allowing what amounts to be a hijacking of your legal and fiduciary responsibilities by allowing anyone other than you to appoint an attorney to represent the interests of the village, you can be held not only liable personally, but also accountable for any actions taken on behalf of the government or any expenditures made to anyone in furtherance to the illegal representation. I am here putting you on notice, as well as trustees and treasurer for the village, that you must direct this individual, Ms. Gilbert, to cease and assist from further perpetrating that she acts for the village as an attorney in the above-subject matter or in any other capacity unless and until you as mayor appoint her and a majority of the board agrees. In the event you decide to follow the law, as I have outlined above, which you should, be wise to hire a competent counsel to do so. You leave no choice but to commence.
Okay. All right. I'm going to address this now because it's obviously something that is going to come up in the future. And I have to recuse myself. up in the future and I have to recuse myself on the issue. The, the village has hired an attorney to sue me and Mr. Guazzoni for legal fees. The amount's probably several hundred thousand dollars and I can't talk about that. I'm recused on that. I'm going to leave the room when the resolution comes up with respect to hiring this, this attorney, Ms. Gilbert. However, I've received this letter from John Sarko this evening that addresses me as the attorney and is asking me to take cer-, as mayor, and is asking me to take certain actions as mayor, not as the candidate who's being sued by the village, but as mayor. And under those circumstances, there is a conflict, an inherent conflict in me versus the Board of Trustees. And all I have to say on it is, there's a case, and I'm handing it to the trustees now, matter of the village of Pomona against Banks, decided by the Second Department earlier this year in May, which provides that in cases such as this, where there is an inherent conflict between the mayor and the Board of Trustees, and in this case, it's the Board of Trustees suing the mayor, that the mayor is entitled to what's called conflict or independent counsel. I need to get legal advice from someone other than the village attorney and someone other than Alyssa Gilbert. So I am going to request authorization, unfortunately, for conflict counsel because the appellate division says that it is the responsibility of the village and the village taxpayers to cover the cost of this conflict counsel. So I'm just letting you know that that is my intention as of tonight with the understanding that this letter just came in and it's something that I'll have to consider. But at this point, I am in conflict with the trustees and I have to have independent counsel as mayor, not as Mark Citron, the candidate for mayor, but as mayor because I'm being asked to do and take certain action with respect to the hiring of Alyssa Gilbert. So that's all I have to say on it and when this issue comes up later on with respect to her retention, of course, I'll leave the room and I won't participate in any of that discussion. Yes, Matt?
Could it cost us less money if we're, if we're, if we're hired, hired?
I'm not, I don't understand.
I'm, I'm sorry, Mayor, it's Josh Scherer. No one on Zoom can hear the question.
Okay, I'm sorry. I'll, I'll repeat, you, I'll repeat the question. Matthew Tenari would like to know if it makes a difference if Chris Casker makes the determination with respect to hiring the lawyer, is that, as deputy mayor?
With legal, more legal fees.
So can, can I just say, a lot just happened in the hour or two hours before this meeting?
Yeah.
And so I'll make a motion to go into executive session when it's appropriate and the trustees that are, that need to be in executive session to have attorney-client discussions will then have that discussion. So we can't make any solutions right now until we have the opportunity to talk to counsel.
Without the background of the field, like, the village is incurring legal fees to try to get back legal fees.
And I, I'd feel more comfortable have, talking more about this after we talk to counsel.
And I, I won't be participating in any of that. I'm just stating what my position is based on this case and if anybody wants to look up the case, it's, and it is available online. It's the matter of the village Board of Pomona against Ian Banks, who was the mayor at the time. If anybody wants to write that down, just Google it and you'll see the case and you can reach your own conclusions about what the appellate division said in Brooklyn about conflict counsel for a mayor that's in conflict with, with the Board of Trustees. Okay.
Mr. Mayor, can I, can I make a state, a public statement, please?
I think, I'm sorry, I think Chuyen Hempel was first, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Oh, I think trustee Brooke wanted to say something.
Why don't we let, okay, go ahead.
Yeah, all right, Ms. Hempel, please feel free to speak.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm Chuyen Hempel, 14 Butter Nut Road. A lot of weighty topics are being put on the table tonight, but I think what I'd like to briefly say is also somewhat important. I want to speak in reference to the opening segment by Chair Ryan Lynch at last Monday's BAR meeting. I served on the BAR as member and as chair between 2003 and 2009, so I have some knowledge of how this board works. The design guidelines referenced by Mr. Lynch as the review gold standard were put in place by a past BAR chair, Ms. Paula Tochi. So a lot of good was created in Tuxedo Park's yesteryear bar, which Mr. Lynch doesn't seem to think very much about. Every person who serves on the bar should act with fairness, collegiality, decorum, humility, and respect for each other and for the applicants, their professional advisors, and neighbors. We do our best as volunteers and make our best decisions by striking a fine balance between preserving architectural standards, adhering to common sense, and promoting goodwill among neighbors. It's a very difficult task and that is, and one that is not amenable to taking absolute positions. Not everybody comes away happy and often compromises are made, but they are not collusions. I'm very saddened to see the divisiveness that has plagued our village this year is now gripping the bar when Chair Ryan Lynch openly accuses two fellow BAR members of some undeserving motives for not being present at the BAR meeting this past Monday. To straighten the record, Christopher Gao was absent, not because of some plot. He left for the UK on October 8th to celebrate his mother's birthday with her and he won't be returning until later this month. And I hear that Stephanie Rinzer is traveling on business. I think at the very late, least as an observer, I think at the very least Chair Lynch may wish to owe an apology to his colleagues and to all past members and chairs of the BAR. And I hope that he will consider my observation that BAR review is not about taking absolute positions, but involves using judgment and common sense to reach optimal decisions that sometimes may involve compromises. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hempel. I see another hand raised that just says iPhone. Would you identify yourself, please, sir?
Yes, my name is Jonathan Palmerant, 217 Westlake Road. I would just like to make a, a small comment on behalf of Ryan Lynch. I was present, Mr. Mayor, when you had a phone call with him and you asked him to resign from his chair seat and I overheard that discussion and I've also seen correspondents stating the same. So I just wanted to straighten the record on that.
Thank you, Mr. Palmerant. Anybody else on Zoom wish to make a comment at this point? There'll be an opportunity to speak at the end of the meeting. Okay. The trustees now have a chance to speak on any issue they believe is appropriate and we'll start with Deputy Mayor Casker.
I think in the interest of time, I will hold my comment.
Trustee Brooke?
One point of clarification with respect to the litigation. I think it's clear that the period covering litigation ends prior to the election in Tuxedo. So the mayor is not part of that litigation in his capacity as mayor. He's part of that litigation as a person who supported Claudio Guazzoni's attempt to stop the election. So just so you know, the legal issue is pretty clear, that it doesn't cover anything related to his having become mayor and it ends well before that. It ends when we were allowed to count the votes. So I'll be happy to hear more information, but you should be aware that that is a poor issue.
Well, my, my response to that trustee Brooke is if you read Sarko's letter, he's asking me to take a certain action as mayor at the present time and obviously the election is over. And that's why I'm in conflict with the board with respect to their litigation and the hiring of, of, of Ms. Gilbert. And we can discuss this in, in, in executive session without, without getting into the substance because I can't be involved in the discussion of the substance. Trustee Shaw.
I'll hold till we get to the part.
Okay, great, thank you. Josh, yes, I'm sorry, that's the problem. I, I apologize. Forget, yeah, go ahead, trustee Scherer.
I, I'll keep this brief and on a more positive note than what we've heard so far. And Peter Van Zand thankfully has shortened my report, but this is really an update on our lakes. There is actually some good news. Many of you know AJ Ray's, who's our lake manager now working at GEI Consulting. His firm conducted a survey of all three lakes, I believe about a month ago. Excellent news, there is no Eurasian water mill foil in Pond Three or the Weewah and a very limited amount of mill foil on the main lake, Tuxedo Lake, over by the village boat dock. That's likely a result of the fact that treatment can't be used within a quarter of a mile of the water intake as well as likely dilution from a coma stream. So again, positive news. If you all remember, two or three years ago, I think people were very concerned about the aggressive growth of the mill foil. Divers will be used, not chemicals. Kathy, we, we all agree with you, chemicals are not the way to go if you can avoid them. Divers are going to be used to pull that mill foil in spring, probably late April. No concern with spread over the, the winter months. GEI will be getting us quotes for divers. Not surprisingly, diving firms are in short supply and high demand, so we'll get them calendared here shortly. We will have another survey of the three lakes in June of 2024, which will give us a good sense for where we are. And again, just more good news, with the absence of the mill foil, the native eel grass has started taking over. It provides cover for fish, which goes to Peter's comments, and it's not aggressive like the Eurasian mill foil and I think more importantly, it is native. With respect to fish stocking, I'm not going to repeat much of what Peter said. Peter is a huge resource for this, a huge resource and very valuable resource for our community and his love of the lakes is impressive and I know there's much that I can learn from him. He is right, the, the trout do eat the herring and are an important part of balancing our ecosystem and protecting the clarity of our lakes. So that is absolutely something we need to look at. We have conducted a fish survey in the past. We did not go into deep water. There are reasons for that, but I will not go into. But Mayor, I will be coming after we get some quotes from, again, GEI, coming to the, the, the board with a proposal for a deep water survey of the fish stock. So we have a true understanding of exactly what the fish ecosystem is in our lakes and what, if anything, more we need to do to protect them. Lastly, two projects which I discussed when I was running unopposed for trustee that I have not forgotten about. One is looking at ways to mechanically oxygen, oxygeninate the, the lakes. We're getting some proposals from GEI on that. I had a conversation with Peter Van Zand earlier today. There may be alternatives that could be cheaper. We're, we're going to be looking at that very closely. Again, that can help with the health and clarity of our lakes. And then lastly, the, the second potential project is the landscaping project. Again, GEI is preparing a proposal that would include using riparian barriers in certain parts of the, our public land to slow storm runoff because obviously when we have these big storms and for those of us, or those people in our community that are using fertilizers and, you know, other impurities, all of those get swept into the lakes and there's a way to slow them down naturally, have those impurities and the fertilizers soaked in to the, the ground before they make it to our lakes. So that's another project proposal that will be coming forward to the board in the not-too-distant future.
Thank you, trustee Scherer.
Sure.
I, I assume that in the agenda of fish stocking, you'll have additional comments to make?
I'm sorry, I probably preempted that, so you can take that off the list.
Okay. Do you have a recommendation as to fish stocking?
Not, not at this time. I, I, I think, listen, I, I, I think we should move forward with it. I don't think this should be controversial. There's no downside and there's lots of upside, obviously, the recreational piece, but there is also the element of controlling the, the herring. And so I, I, I think it's something we should move forward with. I hope that's not a controversial topic, but given the state of our village, it may be.
All right, thank you, trustee Scherer. We'll, we'll move on now to the reports of the various departments. I'll note for the record that I have the justice court report and the amount of fines assessed for the month of August was $1,892 by Justice Hassan. Justice Schoenberg did not sit, so there were no fines assessed. Jeff Boss cannot be present here tonight. He had a family medical issue and he asked me to, to give his report, which I will do. The most important thing that you should know, and everyone in the village should be aware, that milling of Tuxedo Road, which is in preparation for repaving, will be taking place on October 26th and October 27th. There will be flag people out directing traffic because I, we have a two-lane road and they're going to be milling one lane at a time. So my understanding is that will start at seven in the morning. The village DPW will do its best to ensure a traffic flow that allows people to leave, to go to work, wherever they have to go in the morning, and will probably be continuing on those two days until 4:00 PM in the afternoon. The paving itself will begin on October 26th and be finished on October 27th. Again, flag people will be out. The DPW will be directing traffic, but everyone should be aware that that's the cost of improving the road conditions on Tuxedo Road. When you pave a two-lane road, you got to close one lane at a time. So everyone should be ready. I'll put something out on the, on the village website, so if every, and maybe we'll even send something out by code red alert, so everyone knows that on those four days, there may be some issues in getting in and out of the village via Tuxedo Road during regular business hours. The other thing Jeff wanted me to let everybody know is they have a paving schedule that's starting again at the end of October. The roads paved will be Tuxedo Road, as I just mentioned. Westlake Road will be paved and portions of Serpentine are scheduled for repaving October 30th and October 31st. So anybody lives on Serpentine, be aware that they'll probably be doing one end of the road on one day and then since it's a circular, it's a half semi-circle, the other end of the road on the other day. And that, that'll be it for, for Jeff's report for today. Now we move on to Police Chief Dave Conklin. Chief Conklin, are you there?
I am here. Good evening.
Good evening, chief. Before you give the formal report, former mayor, former mayor McFadden raised an issue in his missive about the camera that we had discussed. And I would like you to explain to the general public what is going on with the camera at the main gate with respect to, not the license plate reader, but the camera that runs the New York database. Could you do that, sir?
Yeah, sure. So there, last month in September, we weren't getting any reads off the camera, so we called the vendor, they came in, they removed the camera, brought it back to their shop for repairs and said that it could not be repaired, we need to replace the camera. It was a little over $3,900. It was a little over $3,900. At that point, I advised the board about this expense because it's unforeseen and not budgeted. And the decision was made to put, remove the South Gate camera and put it at the main gate.
No, the decision was not made. It was my proposal, which is on the agenda tonight, to take the camera that reads the license plates and checks the New York State database for suspended licenses and other criminal activity, that that camera at South Gate be moved to the main gate. And I believe you quoted the cost from the vendor was about $1,250. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. So I proposed the resolution that we do that. And the reason I did that was because if you get a hit on the South Gate of someone attempting to enter Tuxedo Park through the South Gate, how is it that that suspended license or other criminal violations that pops up? How is that person apprehended since the South Gate does not have a physical officer present?
So it's the same as the main gate because by the time the alert, the alert comes through, the car usually already passes through the gate. But the officer that's in the patrol cars, it pops up on their laptop in the patrol car that a vehicle just came through the South Gate and it has a hit on it. And then that officer tries, attempts to locate that vehicle.
So that vehicle could be anywhere in the park at that point. And the officer's got to drive around trying to locate that particular vehicle, correct?
Correct.
And at the main gate, you're telling me that the officer in the booth doesn't get an immediate read from that main gate camera that allows him to prevent the offender from entering without being interrogated? Because the driver could be someone other than the person with the suspended license?
Correct. So by the time the vehicle passes through, the plate reader, you know, reads the plate, checks it through the database, that person could have already been let into the park by the time the alert comes through. It could take 30 seconds before the alert comes through. It's not immediate.
Would it be fair to say that the plate reader is limited to residents and registered guests? And the person coming in with a suspended license or some other criminal violation is probably a total stranger, right?
Correct.
So that person's not going to get in through the plate reader anyway. They're going to have to be interrogated by the officer at the booth who's going to say, why?
Yes, yes, yes.
Who are you here to see? And while he takes time to do that, isn't he going to have a chance to read the criminal computer that says, oh, we got a hit?
Exactly.
Okay. So but that can't take place at the South Gate because there's nobody physically at the South Gate to do that interrogation, right?
Correct.
Okay. So at least we have an explanation as to how that works. I've made the proposal that we remove the camera from the South Gate because you just heard there's nobody there to stop the person if they say they want to get in and they they're not even supposed to get in through the South Gate. They have to go in through the main gate. The cop has to chase them all around the roads to try to find them. So that's my proposal. The trustees may amend that proposal and buy a new camera for $3,600. That's up to them. But okay, that was, thank you for the explanation on that.
Mayor, if I may add, as part of my monthly report, I just want to say that I recently applied for a grant. There's a technology grant out there and I originally applied for this grant because the former mayor, McFadden, and myself and John Ledwig discussed having surveillance cameras installed at the water plant and the sewer plant. And we budgeted a little over $10,000 for that. And so I applied for this grant to pay for that so we don't have to take it out of the budget. And when this issue came up with the plate reader, I amended the grant and requested that $3,900 to be added to the grant application for a second project of the plate reader. We just won't know until January when the grant is awarded to the applicants, whether or not we got it.
So theoretically, for the next two months, we'd have a camera at the main gate with the officer. And we'd have fingers crossed that we get that grant from whatever agency you apply to. And then we could purchase a camera and reinstall it at the South Gate. Is that essentially it?
Correct.
Okay. Yes, Matt. I don't think this is brand new.
Set of cameras.
Yeah, this is not the plate reader. This is a separate camera that looks for offenders. And it's been posted up there for a long time. The plate reading system that the former mayor installed is brand new and under warranty, but this is a separate camera. Okay, chief, please feel free to continue your report.
Sure. So in the month of September, we had 222 calls for service. One criminal case reported. One arrest was made. We had one property damage accident. We issued 23 traffic tickets and 11 warnings. Eight fire calls and automatic alarms, two burglar alarm calls, four medical calls. We assisted the town of Tuxedo Police twice. We were assisted by them twice and we patrolled approximately 2,163 miles.
Thank you, chief. Will you be staying on for the item involving the possible creation of a search committee?
I'll be on for the entire meeting.
Thank you, chief. Appreciate it. Okay. Again, Supervisor Boss is not available due to a family emergency, so we will skip item C. And then I'll turn it over to John to talk about his departments.
Yes, during the month of October, we had one C issued for 55 Clubhouse Road. We currently have two matters before the justice court for violations against the building code and the New York and the village code. We have several projects under construction. I'm glad to report that there's no substantial problems with any of those projects. We have a couple other sidebar issues going on. We did notice that the sign at the front gate, the Village of Tuxedo Park sign wasn't quite disrepair. And I did receive confirmation last week that they will be replacing that sign free of charge. Should be done, I would assume, by the beginning of November. Should be replaced. We did notify several people about cutting vegetation and overgrowth back from the roads. Typical at this time of the year, the overgrowth because of all the rain and sunshine that we received has drawn into the roadways. Several people have complied with our request and cut things back. I did meet with someone else on Serpentine Road this past week and their landscaper will be cutting back the overgrowth in that area. Owen Archer Rockland has been helping removing some dead tree limbs where they're hazardous to the electric wires. We are having some success with Verizon. I wish it was a little more pronounced. But I provided a list of outstanding wire and pole issues to Mayor Citron. We forwarded that on to Senator James Sopis. We did see some increased activity last Friday, but since then, I haven't seen any activity. So I did have some communication with the secretary at Sopis's office. And I told her if I don't see any activity by Monday, I'll notify her again. So also, we had a meeting with the MTA in Metro North. Some of you may be aware of this, but we had an issue come up about two years ago where Metro North is changing the railroad crossing that goes into the East Village. And because of that, they're now providing a whole intersection of traffic lights that occurs between the village property and the intersection of East Village Road. So in the future, and likely by the end of this upcoming summer, the blinking light that you approach from going north will be removed. And everyone coming into the village will have to stop at the intersection and have to take a left-hand turn to get into the village. This project has been before the MTA, Metro North. I assume, we had 20 people on that call. Some of them were from the state. And I sent them a list of several questions that we had, one of which, which Mark and I discussed, was will there be a green arrow to allow people to turn left before all the traffic proceeds from the north? And at this point, there is no plans for a green arrow. So I think I'll write them again to request that. I don't know what will trigger it. But there definitely will be an inconvenience without that green arrow.
In case anybody's having a hard time figuring out what the configuration, the proposed configuration is. Now, when you're coming north through Slotesburg and you want to enter the park, once you pass the stores, you make that left, that sloping left up to the booth. The intention of the state is to turn that into a one-way leaving the village. The only way to get to the booth will be on a separate left-hand turn lane and then waiting for traffic to clear coming south before you're able to turn left and head up to the booth. It's going to be a tremendous inconvenience to what we have now, which is where you simply make that left turn once traffic coming southbound clears and you're not subject to any sort of traffic signal. So as a village, I think we're opposed to this change. The change may also involve painting crosswalks at that intersection. I don't know how many people drive south into Slotesburg, but there were new traffic signals that have been installed in downtown Slotesburg for pedestrians. And there's some consideration that they're going to do that too. So if you get a chance to go south into Slotesburg through the business district, just past the old gas station on, it's still working, this gas station on the right, check out the large traffic signal that's on a gantry. Because those are some of the proposals they're making. And we'd like to put some political pressure on our elected officials, perhaps to modify that plan because it's going to be ultimately very inconvenient for residents. And we realize that and we're not in favor of it. So that being said, please continue if there's anything else.
Mentioned Verizon, MTA. We are making some progress with a small leak in the police department roof. We're just waiting for a little more rain, but I think we have it taken care of at this point. They're the high points. A lot of other little things going on, but mostly positive.
Thanks, John. Appreciate it. Next is an update on Weewah Park from Chair Matthew Tenari. Matt, would you like to face the audience and give your presentation so they can see you on TV? Oh, right here. You can stand right here. You don't have to face us. You can face the audience, whatever works for you. Okay.
So I guess it's probably the first time we're updating trustees on the Weewah performance. So apologies, I'm crunching a lot of numbers and I just got it done, but we can post it up after so everyone can see. But the good news is that we've made money at the Weewah the past two years and more money than 23. The things that we focus on for measures of success are memberships, which drive revenue, profitability, which is after our expenses, the ability to fundraise or attract donations. We haven't actually had a fundraiser yet, but we have been fortunate that there's been a lot of inbound donations, which helps us to make some capital improvements and then just general membership feedback. So I'll just read through some quick stats on the numbers and apologies that no one has this yet. But so 23, we don't, by the way, we don't have financial performance from going back in time. We have one year that I kind of base it on, but it's a much different presentation, so it's hard to compare these things. So 23 was the most successful year we have on record. Memberships increased 38 from one to 167 from 129 in '22. So that was a big jump. It's hard to tell what really drove that, but it was nice to see. Revenue, including donations, increased to about $69,000, up from $45,000 in '22. That was largely driven by the $25,000 one-time donation from the Madden family. We generated $30,000 of operating profit after expenses to the village in '23. And that was $5,000 excluding the Madden donation. That's up from $8,000 in '22, which on an apples-to-apples basis is $3,000 of profit in '22, excluding a one-time donation from the Shoemaker family, went up to $5,000 in 2023. So we made $2,000 more of net profit. We, I don't think we really have a bank account, but it just kind of, you know, keep tallying what pluses and minuses. So we're up to about $53,000 in capital sitting there to make improvements, sitting here today. And that includes the budget that the village gave in '22 and '23. And one of the things I wanted to ask about, obviously way too early, but will there be consideration for a budget for the next year? Is that a topic that is open? Because that will drive a lot of our thinking around how much money we need to raise for a playground. We're in very early stages. I'll touch on it, but that's the big capital improvement that we hope for this upcoming season. I just wanted to, on the donation side, so the biggest expense is the lifeguards. We added checkers this year, so that was another personnel expense, past checkers. The lifeguards, we are continuously trying to improve that service. We, I think we had two local lifeguards this year, which was great, folks who live in the area. And we're always looking for more. It's a problem throughout New York State, training and retaining lifeguard. So we continue to work with New York State pools. We will revisit their performance this year ahead of next year, and that's our biggest expense. On the donation front, like I said, the Madden family had a substantial $25,000 donation this past year. We also had meaningful donations from the shoemakers, the Maxwells, the Shaws, the Carbascas and the Calderwoods. So thank you for all that. And those donations helped us to make $23,000 of capital improvements in '22 and $15,000, close to $16,000 in '23. So hopefully everyone can see, we're trying to make small improvements to the park on the edges, nothing big so far. We did the sand, we did the grassy area, we bought trolleys, we bought aquatic equipment. I'm probably forgetting a lot of things, the sheds, the checker thing, yeah. And the playground's a big one. So we have not, we went out about a year and a half ago on the playground to a couple of firms for design quotes and they were very expensive, so we kind of put that on pause. And now we want to get that back, get some momentum behind that. We've kind of started canvassing about 30 families with young kids to get feedback on critical components of what a playground would need. There's all these complexities about what's age appropriate, different age ranges, what's code, what's not. So we definitely need a professional to come in and help us with a little design concept that we can show the public. And given how expensive playgrounds are, probably need a pretty large private fundraising activity in the next year for that. So go ahead.
I was just going to say on the issue of playgrounds, the trustees have any questions about this report?
No.
It's new, so apologies.
Yeah, we, the village has contributed to the Weewah in the last year. And one of the thoughts the trustees discussed was that the village increased their contribution to the playground because it is a community resource and it's a secret of the village values. And one of the things that the folks we spoke to said, they'd love to see increased usage.
Yep.
If we utilize village funds to help improve the playground, the thought was that everybody who's a village taxpayer, by virtue of that, becomes a member of the Weewah. And you have a much bigger platform to play in. Have you, are you aware of that discussion?
I'm not aware. I would say that's generous. I mean, we have to figure, we don't know the cost yet. So we have to figure out all the numbers. I've heard village residents say to us on the committee that we would like to be members without paying because we pay taxes. The village contribute 35, 33,500, 22 in the budget and 20,000, 23. So the village does contribute to that kind of capital surplus that we have available to make improvements. But we always kind of think about what is the impact to the full member base and the membership revenue? Because if we get a one-time budget increase from the village, we need to, for operating profit, we need to figure out a balance to make sure the operation is still profitable and doesn't suck from the village budget on a go-forward basis. So we kind of need to, depends on sizing, long-winded way of saying, but.
Yeah, but all I'm saying is it would be interesting to frame out. I mean, each club is a community resource.
Yep.
That is designed for people who have worked in the park and people who are residents of the park. I'd love to see you sort of think through and present to us a proposal where the village would commit to a fee to help support the modernization and improvement of the Weewah. And in exchange for that fee, all taxpayers in the village would automatically become members
Yep.
of the Weewah. And that would be an interesting way of. And that would be an interesting way of accelerating the improvement of everything occurring.
Yep. We could definitely, we could definitely evaluate what the what the current village residents, their memberships and and the donations and guest fees, what that contributes.
Well, all I'm saying is you should think it out because it's a community resource.
Yeah, we can.
And, you know, I've always been a member, but I rarely ever use it, but it doesn't matter because it's a community resource.
Yep.
So the answer is, if it's a village resource and the village has greater responsibility with it, there's got to be a a number that makes it work.
So for this upcoming season, we'll present two different membership. One being the current status and one being village residents are free, but that would come with a request for the village to contribute some capital on an annual basis to cover.
That that'd be great. That's an easy decision for us to make.
Maybe consider a third option, a bit of a hybrid. You can use the park whenever you want, you can only swim if you pay. Since lifeguards are the biggest expense, then, you know, people who don't want to swim in the lake should be able to use the park as a taxpayer.
That's hard to regulate.
Yeah, I I would say that's that's that's, you know, keep it simple is what you want. So why does it, when you prepare, whatever you want to prepare, we'll be happy to entertain it. I I don't see a reason to.
There may be some cost savings on checkers, too, because then you could use license plate. Yeah, we can think, we'll we'll think about it.
Doesn't matter.
What what we'd like, I've gotten some feedback from some board members that a lot of improvements were done without coming before the board. And what we'd like in the future is, you know, feel free to come to us and tell us this is what we'd like to do. This is how much it'll cost. And certainly with respect to the playground, which everybody wants, and I talked about it a great deal. You know, we're we're happy to listen to any suggestion you may have, and we understand it. From my my discussions, it'll be a contribution of village funds and 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 private donations. Because a lot of, I know a lot of the young families are very, very eager to get a playground where their kids can play and where they can meet and socialize. So from my perspective, that's that's a priority. So.
And anything you do on the playground will have to go before whatever the requisite words. So there'll be a lot of public comment in general, in addition to anything we present to the trustees.
Sure.
But yes, as the as the Weewarr trustee liaison, you'll hear you'll hear everything that.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Got a couple of questions?
Just going to reinforce a comment you may not be that I used to work with privately from the whole playground equipment manufacturer, and it's staggering how many different ways kids can find ways to hurt themselves. And so there's actually a lot of industrial design that goes into this. So I think the investment upfront, the firm that knows how to do this and maybe even an independent safety expert.
Yep.
I think we'll pay dividends in terms of insurance costs and liability management. Of course, we want our kids to be safe. So I think that I think that's a smart upfront investment.
If if anyone, by the way, on the phone, or if anyone knows someone who could help on that front, whether it's an architect or some safety expert, we have a large network here. So anyone who want to send over would be.
Thanks. Great work.
We have one person who wants his hand up.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, we have one here.
Well, we have Mr. Witty. Yeah.
We had quite a few people from town every day.
Yep.
I see you don't have a board any.
So the board was removed prior to the transition to our committee. I think my understanding it was an insurance cost issue, but I'm not entirely positive. So if 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 there's a general interest to get a diving board back, it's something we can definitely revisit.
All I all I see are head injury, terrible, terrific, terrific neck and head injuries. That's my primary concern is a is a personal injury law. I don't want to see that happening. The water's just not deep enough, I think, for that. It's it's really not, it's too risky, but okay. Yeah, we could, but we're not going to. Okay. Thanks, Matt. Anybody, somebody else want more? Oh, okay.
Can I just jump in?
What?
I'm I'm so sorry. Can I just jump in for one second? Because I didn't hear the question at all before, so could you just summarize it for me? Do you mind?
Question about diving board?
The question was, was, can we get diving boards?
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Okay, go ahead. In the back of the room? Please state your name for the record. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Vore.
Yeah, that will have the, whenever we have a time.
I'm 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 sorry.
None of us can hear.
Yeah, can you please, you, if someone's not going to use this, thank you.
The question was, or the comment was to look at the increased insurance cost for the village with the new playground, which we'll definitely be focused on.
I'm sorry, those of us on Zoom can't hear the questions.
We'll repeat it when she completes the question. Thank you. Go ahead, Ms. Devore.
You mentioned that there were thirty families that are interested in the playground. So the percentage was pulled to the rest of the village.
Let me just repeat the question. The question is, with thirty families interested in the playground as a percentage of all residents of the village, will this issue of the playground be presented as a as a referenda to to the voters?
Well, I don't I don't know the answer to that. The thirty, the thirty families were just people with young kids. I personally have their email. So I just said, what do you, what does everyone want? Send me playgrounds you like, playgrounds you don't like. It's like just getting the the ball rolling on on feedback on what people want and would use. But I don't, I mean, defer to the trustees on how that process actually happened.
A little early to talk about that.
My son loves all of them. So we 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 have been to all of them and 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 Warwick has some great ones, too. I think the 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 committee's initial initial kind of style thought was more of a natural, nature-based playground. So a lot of wood and they make some really good wood composite-looking things that last a long time. Now it's a little bit more expensive, but it doesn't look like a playground and it's we have to price all these things out.
I'm sorry, what was the follow-up question? I just didn't hear it at all. Sorry.
Have we been to, did we look at playgrounds in the nearby area as comparables?
We we've got a long agenda. We've got a long agenda. What we will do is we will have a meeting about this, okay? I don't mean to cut you off, and I don't mean to cut people off, but this is a specific area. It's it's early on and we will focus on it and make sure everybody's aware of what the proposals are. And everyone will get to share their opinion as to how to develop the Weewarr and specifically the playground. But we do have to move on because it's eight fifteen and it looks like we'll be here till ten or later. So thank you, Matt. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Um, let me make, the next presentation is called the Lake Warden Presentation, and it's by Todd Januzi. And let me explain why I put this on the agenda.
I'm I'm sorry to interrupt. I'm so sorry, Mark, but we did have somebody with his hand raised. I don't know, you want to let him talk first before we go to another topic?
It's been raised. No, it actually was raised about five minutes ago.
I'm sorry, sir. I I should be more careful when I look at the screen. I'm I'm, go ahead, sir.
So it's Nick Shoemaker, one oh four Clubhouse Road, and we're big contributors to Weewarr, I guess, relative relatively so. Our family's been big sunbathers. It's much more comfortable to do it there now than at our house. I just want to say thank you to Denise Tavani, who I was told today is no longer the the chair, which is unfortunate. She compelled us to really get involved in the Weewarr, and I think she did a great job. And I think that we should all kind of acknowledge that. So it's a real shame she's not there.
Thank you, sir. By the way, I didn't, I don't see your hand because it's actually partially covered by the REC on the screen, which you can't see. So I do apologize for that.
Yeah, I'm not really technologically oriented, so, but the sunbathing.
You, it's just you're in the upper-left corner and your hand is kind of covered. But thank you, thank you for those compliments about Ms. Tavani.
No, I really think it's unfortunate she's no longer there and, you know, that's too bad, so.
Thank you, sir. We have three lakes, and we're supposed to have, according to the reorganization plans over the years, lake wardens for each of those three lakes. And the question is, what is a lake warden and what is the responsibility of a lake warden? At the last reorganization meeting earlier this month, Jedediah Turner was renominated and approved to be the lake warden of Pond Three where he lives. Greg Libby has been the longtime lake warden of the Tuxedo Lake. And we have a vacancy for the Weewarr. I just want to say that Elizabeth Cottner, who lives above Weewarr, has volunteered to assume the position of lake warden. But that doesn't answer the question of what is a lake warden, what do they do? I had a meeting of the three together with Todd Januzi, who's about to make a presentation to us. Todd has a lot of experience being a lake warden. He's very familiar with the safety issues that arise in boating and fishing. And he's here to make a presentation with respect to what a lake warden is, what they do, what their responsibilities generally are. And in addition, I am going to nominate Todd once he's interviewed by the board at executive session tonight to be the supervising lake warden. So we will, in fact, have four lake wardens. And now we have a chance to hear exactly what a lake warden is and what the lake warden does. So please come forward, Mr. Januzi, and give us your best presentation. And you can sit right there so everyone can see you.
Before we start this, I have a question.
Yes.
Was Greg Libby asked to resign as lake warden?
Absolutely not. Greg Libby is the lake warden of Tuxedo Lake.
Oh, and then, so you're just adding a layer.
I'm adding one layer of supervising lake warden, or at least I'm proposing that. The position of supervising, we'll have four lake wardens for three lakes. And I'm nominating Todd as the supervising warden, and now you'll hear his presentation.
You're going to get paid more?
Double the zero than everyone else gets, and I'll accept it. But well, first of all, for those of you that may not know me, I'm Todd Januzi. I've lived on seventy-seven West Lake Road as a resident for twenty-five-plus years. I spend a lot of time on the lake or looking at the lake and observing people. I have also helped some people in distress over the years and animals as well in distress in the lake, including deer and and dogs. But but mostly the humans is the is the priority. And the idea is it it does make perfect sense to have three lake wardens. And what do they do is a great question. What don't they do? I think warden is a is a pretty tough name for the responsibility. I I look at it more like a lake ambassador and someone who can communicate. And we have three lakes and we have people that are on each of those independent three lakes more than more than others might be. So it does make sense for me to have a independent lake warden associated with each lake they are most frequently a part of. The idea of a supervisory role is really a coordinator, okay? But that's in in a sense of what are the, all the all the lakes are connected, right? And there are common issues throughout. And I've also been a volunteer ambulance driver, and now I'm an EMT as well for Tuxedo and and another town as well. And I focus on the safety issues. And I've seen and I've told people, and I've had a role as a lake warden and under different administrations. I saw the the role as really education and awareness facilitation for people. They were quite often participating very unsafe behaviors or their or their children were were participating in unsafe behaviors. And by pointing out that in a collegial way, not, you know, we're not there to arrest or or find someone necessarily or or at all, but really just inform them. You know, by the way, this is, and it may, by the way, also be a rule. Now, this is the New York State Safety Handbook and Registration Boat Operation Manual. And this could be distributed along with every sticker. Here's access, and people could read it and they could hopefully learn what 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 best practices are. And some of them are actually laws as well, but the point is they're best practices. Okay, and we see accidents, Leslie's a volunteer as well for the EMT for Tuxedo. We see people that were sitting on the seat belts. If you sit on a life jacket and you're in a a stand-up paddleboard or a kayak or canoe, you know, that's an issue. It doesn't do any good, similar to a seatbelt. So I believe that there should be a greater role going forward of the lake wardens in coordinating access. And there's all these online safety classes that cost about nothing, but they can really save life in advance. I pull people out that turned over late season in skulls and alone. I've I've rescued people that were in a kayak that they were clearly oversized for, okay? And but that had taken it out from the club. So the other issue of the lake warden is to make sure that the public or the access points, like a club or fishing clubs or boat clubs, distribute this and communicate safe practices to their members, some of whom just don't know. Even if they've been on a lake and they might have done it a long time, it's unsafe to have a kid dangle feet off the front of a pontoon boat underway. It's super dangerous. There are deaths because of that, because the kid gets sucked under, or an adult could, and then pops up right right about the time that the engine, you can't cut an engine, even an electric one, in in ten feet, fifteen feet, right? So we've been fortunate. I'd like that to continue, and I want to be, have a greater awareness for people. And so that's what what I think a lake warden really should do.
Thank you, Todd. We appreciate that presentation. As I said, I'll, we'll be, if you wait around for an executive session to be interviewed by the trustees.
Absolutely.
And then perhaps a resolution will be forthcoming afterwards with respect to your position on the lake.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, we're going to move this along. Water Department reports, Treasury reports are both attached to the record. Elizabeth, would you, is there anything you'd like to add to that? You're on mute.
Sorry about that. No, thank you. I think the reports are self-explanatory.
Self-explanatory. Okay, that's fine. Now, we're going to, we're going to skip around a bit because we have a guest under new business. We have Carl Stone of Weston and Sampson. I asked him to come tonight to provide a PowerPoint presentation of the engineering issues that are faced by the village. And rather than have him stay here while we as residents continue on through this long agenda, I'm going to give him the opportunity to make the presentation now. Weston and Sampson is our is our engineering firm, and I'll turn it over to you, Carl, at this point.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate the consideration on that. So in just a moment, I'm going to try to hit the right clicks here to get the presentation.
Can I can I just say one thing? I'm sorry, Brian Stoller has his hand up. But I don't know if he does. I'm sorry, Brian Stoller had his hand up, but he doesn't seem to anymore, so maybe we could just go on. I'm sorry.
Go on.
Well, he's the lawyer who can wait around with the rest of it, with the rest of us. We'll give the, we'll give the guest the opportunity to make this presentation.
Thank you. Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
I'm going to. So, yes, thank you, everyone. Good evening. I'm just going to present just a handful of slides here to kind of review a number of infrastructure projects that are going on in the village. Weston Sampson has been the engineer for the village for on-off for some time, probably more than ten, twelve years. And so we're pretty familiar with a lot of the infrastructure that many of you may not see. Slide, so. So the, one of the bigger projects or or programs has been the sewer system evaluation study, which began quite a number of years ago. The purpose of the program is to address infiltration and inflow into your sewer system. I heard before the meeting started from the gentleman that the, I understand the original sewer system went in sometime around eighteen eighty-four. So it's been around a while, and so they deteriorate over time. This program is mandated by the state through your permit for your wastewater treatment plant. Has a component in it that requires that you conduct this program, which was designed by Weston and Sampson when they required it, and is now ongoing. So current projects, you're going to see the two terms here, phase three and phase two. Those referred to, phase two is the study phase, and phase three is the construction corrective action phase. The village is divided, has about seventeen individual subbase. The village is divided, has about seventeen individual sub-basins. There's sewers that run both sides of the lakes to get it down to the treatment plant that the water's end. And then there's seventeen sub-basins that have flowed into those lines that are independent of one another. So they made a good point to evaluate by sub-basin to try to find which ones were the most egregious in terms of inflow. So that work has been ongoing. Currently, phase three is being completed, which is the construction improvements, lining, spot repairs and so forth for sub-basins two and ten, which in the vicinity of Continental Road, Clubhouse Road, Stable Road, Circuit Road, Serpentine Road, which is sub-basin two, and Turtle Point Road, referred to as sub-basin ten.
If I could just interrupt for a sec. As an attachment, for educational purposes only, I attached the definition of inflow and infiltration. It's a term, terms you're gonna hear a lot, both from this presentation and from future board meetings. It's from the Bradford Sanitary Authority, but it, it defines what it means, so everybody will be on the same page. You'll understand what inflow and infiltration is. You can see it as an attachment to the agenda if you go home, and you can read it and educate yourself on that. Please continue.
Yeah, and I, I should have started there. I'll give a real quick, okay? Inflow is direct inflow where surface waters can directly get into the sewer system, the cross connections of, of storm sewers, or damage to storm sewers that flow quickly and directly into the sanitary sewer, which is a no-no. It obviously, it brings rainwater into your system and it, it hampers the capacity of your, of your system. Infiltration is actually groundwater that's flowing into the cracks and breaks and things in the pipe. So it's not direct from rainfall. It can happen when elevated groundwater. So, thank you. So phase three is, is complete. The construction improvements are done for two and ten, as I said. The, during that time, there was some truck sewer, trunk sewer investigations conducted in twenty twenty-two and identified an issue in the trunk sewer. And so that was added to the project, and that work was, is now completed. The work's been substantially complete with final warranty inspections to verify if repairs are still in working order, scheduled for this fall. The project is, looks like it will finish about fifty thousand dollars under budget overall. Phase two investigations are, are being conducted of the public sewer collection system within sub-basins five, eight, and sixteen. I wish I had the map here, but nonetheless, wouldn't be able to see it probably from where you're all sitting. But suffice it to say that that phase two investigation includes manhole inspections, which are now ongoing. You've probably seen some of our folks around the village looking for those manholes. It sounds simple, but not necessarily, given the nature of the village. House inspection in late October to look for, do dye tests and look for connected rain, uh, storm, you know, roof leaders and things, third yard drains and things like that. And CCTV and flow isolation is tentatively scheduled for the spring. Yeah, actually, it's, we can insert cameras into the sewers to try to find breaks and so forth. So, and as I said, this, this, once these sub-basins are completed, a component of the program, you know, you just don't go blindly trying to just fix things and say, okay, well, I guess we're doing okay. So at, at some point, and once these are completed, we're gonna be going back in and doing a plant flow evaluation. Obviously, initially, before we started, years ago, your, your plant saw flow spikes. It's designed for about four hundred thousand gallons a day. It was seeing typical, based on the occupancy and use, it should see about a hundred and fifty thousand gallons per day. It was spiking up to a million. So it's a, it was a significant problem, not, and it's not unique to the park. Every old, every, it's long, you know, east coast has this problem and elsewhere too. So that's an ongoing program that we will be continuing to address. Water distribution system projects in this area are the district area metering, similar to the, the, the sub-basin concept for the sewers. There are various water areas, distribution areas that are isolated. And so the, has been assisting the village in trying to identify areas within the village system contributing to water loss. There's some fairly significant water loss in the system based on what the plant is producing and what the meters are measuring at the households. There's not a, there's a gap there. So this program is trying to look at where, where this might be happening.
Water is money, right?
Yeah, water, absolutely. Water's money. And interestingly enough, in the village, when the system was built, a little side note that a lot of the water lines and sewer lines are close and running the same general alignments, okay? Not next to each other, but reasonably close. And so, you know, it, it's potential that if you have break in a water main, it finds a way, right? And it can find its way into the sewer. And, and that's what we're gonna try to, that one component of what we're gonna see about, see if we can find with the, with the water metering to find areas that are problematic. The village is also looking into discussing valuation of potential replacement of residential water meters. Current meters were installed in nineteen, mid nineteen nineties. The village spends a considerable amount of time and manpower to read these meters. The use of new meters with automatic reading systems and the technology, they can literally do it on their cell phone, connect to these things to get this data. And then the village can start to do a better, have more data to do a more comprehensive assessment of these, where these water losses might be occurring. And the water, the town of Tuxedo Water System Pressure Monitoring, the, some of you may know that the, the water, the village provides water to the town across Route Seventeen, that section of the town of Tuxedo. And there have been some issues with pressure loss and so forth there. So there is gonna be a, a new pressure meter put in at an opportune point over there to help investigate causes and, and control that. Tuxedo Lake Water Main, we've heard a lot about the lake today. And whether you knew it or not, there is a, a water main that runs on, on the floor of the lake from the water plant to the west side. And that, that's, that's old. The, we are currently in the design of, of replacement for that water main. As you can imagine, that's not an easy undertaking. It's nearly eighty years old, and it's critical piece of infrastructure. Without that, it'd be very difficult to maintain pressures on the west side. This project is a proactive effort of the village Board of Trustees to reduce potential repair costs in the event the pipe were to fail. So it's functional now. It's not, it's not a problem at this time, but given its age and the significance of the infrastructure to the village, the board has decided to move forward. We're doing the design of it, and that, we're gonna start to pursue permitting for that and trying to get grant monies to pay up to sixty percent for that project. And the cost, the, the current opinion of cost that we have is about six hundred and eighty thousand dollars to, to make that repair, that replacement, right?
Just the underwater main?
Just, yeah, just the piece of, you know, the, literally from the plant right over to a connection on the land side from, on the west.
We know if it's leaking as we speak.
We've had leak detection services there at least three times in the last six years. There's no evidence that anything is leaking, you know? The, the main issue is if it does fail, we really cannot adequately supply pressure to the east, to the, to the other side of the lake. There is a pipe that connects east and west by the Tuxedo Club, but doesn't have sufficient capacity to get the water around.
Poses low pressure zones and things, so.
Mr. Mayor, if I could quickly say, I'll tell you how they put that pipe down to the lake.
Well, let's save that for, let's, let's save that for the historical.
We should have coffee. Okay, next, the Mountain Road Main Replacement. For the, oh, the Mountain Road Water Main, the, the design scope includes replacement of the water mains within the Mountain Road, Schoolhouse Road, Schoolhouse Lane, Circle Drive, Spartan Place Neighborhood. Survey, a topographic survey on the ground, utility location, and two technical evaluations been completed. The design currently in progress and, and permitting to follow once we have the design to submit for permits. Purpose of to replace the asbestos concrete pipes, which are prone to failure, and to establish a new, more accessible connection to the water system. The current connection to the Route Seventeen main traverses through easements within private property, and some sections of water main are underneath existing structures. Never a good thing. The new alignment will provide the ability for DPW to maintain the system in a faster and less invasive manner. We, Weston Sampson is performing the design now, permitting bidding. It's under contract for permitting bidding and construction administration services. It's ready to be submitted to the Department of Health for permitting next month. We've assisted the village in submitting a DWSRF grant. Don't ask me what that stands for. Pays up to sixty percent of project cost if, if we secure that. So schedule anticipated construction is in spring of next year. A given probable construction cost has not been finalized. I, I don't have that for you at the moment.
So would it be fair to say, Carl, that what you're saying is we have old water mains, we have old sewer mains, and they need attention? And they need attention now?
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's, it's like anything, you know? You maintain, you can maintain the house, or you can wait till the roof falls in.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's what it comes down to, folks. So that's why hoping to, I'm setting up a finance committee, because we may, we may have to seek municipal financing, just as we did for the dam. The dam was gonna fail, and Alan McHugh and everybody else did a great job in the repair and replace, in the replacement of that dam. And with these pipes, we're gonna have to start working on them. You know, we can ignore it only for so long, and then something really awful could happen. So I think Carl's made it quite clear with respect to those particular areas of infrastructure. Anything else, sir?
Yeah, just a, a couple more things. Um, we have another project, and I, I've used the euphemism, roof falling in, I, you know, there you go. Here's an example. This is the water treatment plant, doing, working with some structural repairs there. There's a section of the, of the, it's actually a floor above this. This, this is in the pump room. So we're, we'll be working to help, you know, design and repair, make a repair to this. Obviously, it's in pretty tough shape.
But the DPW is doing the repair? You guys provided the design?
Right. We'll, we're assisting with, with trying to in-house make this repair. Correct. There's also gonna be some updates to the Clearwell. The Clearwell is, the storage, you know, treated water is stored in a Clearwell then pumped to the system. So there are some things that need to be done with that. Don't wanna get into the design details, but that's just another ongoing project that was required by the Department of Health. Everything on the water side, Department of Health, everything on the sewer side is D C. We're also seeking funding for that for up to sixty percent of the work on the Clearwell. And, I'm just about done. Summit Road Retaining Wall, I, I know, if you're aware, there's, there's a section of the retaining wall up on Summit Road that has collapsed. So we're working to, to figure out, you know, how, how best to repair that, prepare the design for that.
It's our wall, right? It's the village wall? Yeah, it's the village wall. We're gonna, we're gonna have a discussion maybe next month about village walls and the law regarding maintenance and repair of walls generally. That'll be on the agenda, I think, in November. We obviously have enough to do tonight, but thank you, Carl.
And then, so I'll just, other projects. This, we're doing stormwater system asset mapping. That's, you know, stormwater in the village is a, is a known issue, and its infrastructure is also old in many cases. So we're starting to map that so we understand what's out there and what we, what you have and where it is. Doing annual dam inspections, low, we're looking at the low-level control valve for the Weewa, water meters, grant application, East Village Grant Application, some DPW building structural inspection, and Pond Three Dam Bridge Evaluation. And I know it's been a long night so far, so I'll leave it at that. Unless there's some questions, I'll try to answer the best I can.
Yes, Professor Hayes.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm, I'm sorry, just, I'm sorry, just for, hold, hold on.
Hold on, he's been here, right?
Yes, please repeat the question.
All right, the question is, when you're talking about, could you repeat it, Carl?
Yeah, when you're talking about stormwater, he's, he asks, you're talking about water that goes into catch basins and ultimately ends up in our lakes. The answer is yes.
You got that, Doc? Yeah. Anybody else? Any other questions?
Is there any priority to all of this?
Well, the first priority is to map.
Is there, is there any priority to all of this? Thank you.
All the projects.
I mean, you went over a lot of things.
Yeah.
Is there a prior, I mean, there's money in the budget for this stormwater mapping.
Right.
There's money in the budget for several years, but it hasn't gone.
Correct. Yeah, I, I can't speak to the, the village budget per se on that, but yeah, all, all these things are in various stages of, of completion, by, depending on the projects, which I tried to go through a little bit here. But, yeah, the, the, the mapping of the stormwater infrastructure itself is underway.
Anybody else? Question? Yes, ma'am. Oh. Uh, John might have answered that.
The question was?
Question, the question was, thank you. The question was, is there any thing in the water meters that would alert the absent homeowner that there was a leak going on above and beyond the standard usage? That would be an alarm so that they would know there was a problem?
The answer is, if we are able to go to a system where the village can ping each meter once a day or every two days, we certainly can tell if there's been a continuous run of water, which could lead to a break. The, the difficult part we have, because of the topography in the village, is with the systems that are available now, we'll be able to easily obtain meter reading information remotely.
There are mechanisms.
There are, there's, it's already out there, but, but, yes, but we're a little concerned about the topography, and no one has come to us guaranteeing, you know, that it will work. And it is a large expense. I, I guess I should also say that in the testing of some of the meters that we've done, despite their age, we're finding most meters are over ninety-eight percent accurate as they are. So it's a little bit hard to spend a significant amount of money without a, a really large benefit.
But my point is, if you can put on the line, bikes, which is given by private companies, and they will alert you if something unusual happens.
Yes, there are private companies that do that.
So you, you're saying that a, a individual homeowner could, could put a, a meter on the line that would alert them, an alarm essentially?
That there's a sensor, and I believe in some cases, there's a sensor and a valve that can be installed where remotely, you could turn the water off.
It'll actually turn it off automatically. It'll sense the toilet running and then shut your water off.
If you, if you, ma'am, if you need that information, we'll be happy to get it to you.
Thank you. I just, I'm thinking for everyone.
Okay.
Almost everyone I know has had a first pipe with some issue where they had something running in their house and then received a bill for thousands of dollars for their water. And it would just be, it, you know, if, if there was some way to, you know, be alerted to that ahead of time, if there is like to install those electronic water meters, that would be something we could think about.
Thank you. Anything else from the floor or from Zoom to Mr. Stone? All right, thank you, sir. Thank you for your patience and waiting around. I guess you have a long trip home.
Oh, no, it's not a problem.
Okay, all right. Thank you, sir. Okay, now, moving on, we'll, we'll, we'll move past the approval of minutes. And the next discussion is something we started last month. It's an important discussion, and it's, it's village elections. I'll, I'll, I guess I will start on this particular point. We have an option of turning over our village-run elections to the Board of Elections of, of Orange County. It is available to every village in the county. I have spoken to the Board of Elections Commissioner Louise Van De Mark a number of times. She has advised me that there are two villages here in the county that utilize their services. The villages of Chester and the village of Woodbury, which is contained within the The villages of Chester and the Village of Woodbury, which is contained within the town of Woodbury. The cost to the villages is nil. Once the village assigns its elections to the Board of Elections, they take over the entire process. And there are certain changes that take place, which specifically impact what happened in the last election. We have a community that votes largely by machine ballot, but there are a large number of absentee ballots that are cast. In the last mayoral election in June, which was obviously a contested election, you had about, oh, a hundred and, two hundred and forty, two hundred and fifty votes by machine. You also had about a hundred and eighty absentee ballots that were cast by residents. With respect to those absentee ballots, when they were tabulated by the inspectors in August at the conclusion of the litigation, the inspectors, and anyone who was here or, or heard about it, there were three of them, they examined these absentee ballots, and they disqualified thirty-five of those hundred and eighty or so ballots. And the reason for the disqualifications were everything from failing to sign the envelope, to mismatched signature, to a person not being recorded as a registered voter on the rolls that the inspectors had with them. Under New York State law, because this was a village-run election, those, in quotes, defective ballots could not be cured by the voter. If we opt for a county-run election, the law provides that the county and the Board of Elections are able to notify upon receipt of what appears to be a defective ballot, the voter, to offer the voter the opportunity to cure, so that that vote can be tabulated. This could not be done in the last election, because it is not allowed for village-run elections, but it is something that would be permitted if we were to assign the responsibility to the Board of Elections. Now, everybody knows that that's the biggest dispute that we had that carried us through, and ultimately led to my election by six votes. And for those of you who are not particularly happy with me sitting in this chair, I can tell you that if those thirty-five ballots had been cured, there's a very good possibility that my opponent would be sitting in this chair. So, it's something that everybody should think about. The Board of Elections will provide all the machines, they will provide all the ballots, they will provide the inspectors, they will take care of everything, and at no cost. So, there will be an additional savings of approximately two thousand dollars to three thousand dollars a year that we spend annually in running our own elections. Now, I know there's a big dispute about this, and I'm gonna give everyone on the board an opportunity to talk about it. I think we're all relatively well-informed about the two options. And then I'll allow members of the public to speak on this, and we will not be making any decisions tonight. I can tell you that I had a phone call with the mayor of the Village of Woodbury yesterday, Mayor Jacque Maza, and he told me that they are pleased with the Board of Elections taking over their village elections. They have no problems or concerns or complaints about the way the Board of Elections runs their elections, and they are perfectly satisfied with the process. I reached out to the mayor of Chester, I called him three times, he didn't call me back. But that is essentially the proposal that I make, is to change the village election system from village-run by the clerk to Board of Elections. And there's one more thing I would like to do, because the one person that has the responsibility for running the elections and went through the process that we had to deal with, uh, this year, is our village clerk, Elizabeth. So, would you please unmute Elizabeth?
I'm unmuted.
Elizabeth, do you have a preference personally about whether you would like to run the village election from this day on, or would you prefer that the Board of Elections takes over the process? Just a personal preference.
I would prefer that the Board of Elections take, takes over the elections, yes.
We know that if the Board of Elections takes it over, it will free Elizabeth during the election season to focus in on her other many responsibilities that she has. The election process starts in April and runs through June most years, and if it's a contested election, it can be a mess. If it's an uncontested election, it can be relatively easy. So, with that being said, I will open the floor first to Deputy Mayor Kasker, the other trustees, and then we'll take comments from anyone who wants to speak on this particular issue.
Thank you, Mayor, um, I actually spoke to both the commissioners of the Board of Elections today, and just to add, there, there is another change. The election will happen in November, and it would be in the town, it wouldn't be here. When the county runs the election, it's all, the only election they run for that municipality, so the village, um, candidates would be on the big ballot with the judges and the town and president and congressman if it's that cycle.
If I could just interrupt.
Yeah.
I had the conversation with Louise Van De Mark, and she told me we could continue our, our, our elections in June, so.
That's how she told me. And she also, so, so there's a point to clarify, because she also.
Yeah, this is important, because our June elections are, 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 are important.
Yeah.
For many different reasons. And so, we're gonna have to clarify that point, because I can tell you, I spoke to her, and she said, she's not crazy about it, because it's primary season for the national or state or local elections, but they could accommodate us in June, so we'll have to, we're not gonna make a decision tonight, so we're gonna have to make another call to the Board of Elections and the commissioners on that.
Unless Brian knows anything different, but, um.
Go ahead, I'm sorry to interrupt.
I agree. We had facts, you know, but now there's, and then the other thing is.
I think.
Yeah, you're right, well, there's also some, okay, whether it's November or June, there's still things to discuss.
Please continue.
Elizabeth won't have to handle absentee ballots, that's done by the county. She won't have to handle petitions for the candidates, that's done by the county. She won't have to certify the election or do any other things that happen on Election Day, because that would all be done by the county. And then we'll clarify whether June or November is.
We're not making any decisions tonight. Trustee Brooke, do you have any thoughts?
We, we, we brought this issue up at the last meeting, and I believe the judgment was, we should ask our counsel, Jared, to provide a pros and cons document for us to evaluate, as opposed to just talking about it more. So, we do not have, to the best of my knowledge, such a document, correct?
No, that's not true, we have a document from, uh, Jared that explains the process. It's an attachment to the, uh, agenda. It is, while it is marked, some of you may have seen it, privileged and confidential, uh, a majority of the board agreed that we would release the document, the memo, from Jared to the public. You can all read it, it describes the process, it describes the fact that the village can always take back the election from the BOE if they're not satisfied with it, and I invite all of you to look at the very well-written and very educational memo. Uh, I don't know if you've seen it, Trustee Brooke, but it is there as an attachment to the agenda. And I did ask you if you would agree to release it, and you did say you were in favor of that.
Yeah, I was in favor of releasing, I said it should also, also be released without the statement of protected by eternal, I am privileged, because as a matter of principle, if we release documents that say protected by attorney coverage, we're at risk of saying, no documents are further protected, so we would excerpt that from it and circulate it, so. It is circulated, I think, I don't think it requires a huge amount of discussion, I suggest at the next meeting, we have a decision, which the board has to make, the board is supposed to take leadership in these issues, to decide which way we go, and we take a vote on it, it's done, we don't have to discuss it a lot more. Community is well-aware that we've just gone through a terribly divisive, ugly period, which cost us a lot of money, and this may be a way to bypass that in future elections.
Thank you for your remarks, Trustee Shaw.
Well, first of all, contested elections, I've been here twenty-five years, there've only been two, the rest have not been any. So, um, second of all, tell me how the absentee ballots work, first of all, if you're gonna sign a petition, you have to request the petition from Orange County, from Goshen, and then you sign it, and you get the signatures, and you have to give it back to her, them. And then absentee ballots, how are those handled? Do you have to ask for them by mail from Goshen, or you have to go there in person? And do you have, then when you, you give in your ballot, you run the risk of mailing it? Or you have to drive it to Goshen, so I think it makes it way more complicated for the people who are here, especially from New York, and I just think adds a whole nother hurdle, and it's just gonna make it even worse. Make it more difficult to vote, and I think you don't wanna make it more difficult to vote, I think you wanna make it as easy it is to get everybody's vote. That's it.
Thank you, Trustee Shaw. Uh, anybody from the audience have anything they want to say on this issue? And you, Trustee Sherer, I'm sorry, again, I, I apologize. Trustee Sherer, you go next.
Uh, listen, on balance, uh, I think I'd be in favor, I think it's important for voters to be able to cure. I think that, uh, anything that can avoid the, the, the dive, uh, divisive, uh, election that we just went through, uh, would be important. I think, obviously, this June versus November question is an important one to get nailed down. Uh, and I think, uh, Tinka, uh, raises important questions that need to be answered. Um, obviously, we don't wanna make it more difficult for people to, to vote, we wanna make it easier. But on balance, uh, I would, I, I, I'm in favor at this point.
Thank you, Trustee Sherer, again, I apologize for the fact that I keep forgetting you're on the Zoom call.
That's, that's okay.
Yeah, okay, and, and. Yeah. I'm sorry, I can't. Oh, yes, I'm sorry, again, your, your hand is, is blocked by the hard seat. Go ahead, sir.
It seems to be, and it, it's a weird militaristic end, so I apologize for that. Um, I agree with Tinka completely, as some of you splits their time, like, it is about ease of vote if it's done appropriately, and Mayor, thank you for acknowledging that there was a good chance that you could have lost had this, what's been counted, so.
It is what it is. Anybody else?
It is, you're right.
Yeah. Anybody else? Okay, that, that closes the discussion for today, we'll, um, we will get an answer on the very important question of, do we have to move the elections to November, or can we keep them in June? And we will have that answer for you, uh, at the next meeting. The next issue, um, is going to be the tax assessment procedures, uh, we have, is our attorney present?
I am here, not raising my hand, but I'm here.
All right, uh, let me start the discussion by saying that, um, we have always had the Board of Trustees act as the assessors on village property. And I can tell you from conversations that I've had with Senator James Scoofus, the chairman of the Government Operations and Investigations Committee in Albany, that he is proposing legislation to change the law that will prohibit the Board of Assessors to be the Board of Trustees of any village in the state. Only villages.
No towns.
No towns. It is an amendment to the village law. He is going to introduce it in January. I have a copy of the language, which I will be happy to read once I find it. But I am telling you that because the question becomes, do we wait for the state to act? Or do we begin the discussion now about changing the system? The legislature is controlled by the Democrats, both the Senate and the Assembly, and a bill that is sponsored by the Chairman of the Government Operations, Government Operations and Investigations Committee has a pretty decent chance of passing, even though I'm not in a position to make a prediction about that. So, that's why I put this on the agenda, because I think it's a discussion that we should begin to have in terms of options we can consider. And for that purpose, I have asked Attorney Stolar to give us a presentation. Are you there, sir?
I am, thank you.
Please begin your presentation.
Of course, all right, so, so there really are two primary options for a village, either you can be an assessing unit village.
Hold on a second.
Sure.
First, I just wanted to say something that I was really pretty offended by what you raised at the last meeting, that you implied that the Board of Assessors were political. I take my job as a fiduciary very seriously, I know that Chris does, I know that Paul does, and Josh Sherer does also. And implying that we were not doing our job, I think is awful. And that is why you were starting this conversation, I believe, but I just wanna put it there for the record that I was highly offended that you even said that and implied that we are basically dishonest people for that, so.
You're not getting an apology from me, Trustee Shaw, so, uh, you said your, you said your piece, and it's on the record, and that, that's it. So, Mr. Stolar, please begin your presentation.
Certainly, uh, what I was saying is, there, there are really two primary options, you can be an assessing unit village, or you can cease to be an assessing unit village. Uh, the way it exists now in your village is you are an assessing unit village. You, as the board and the assessor, have the obligation to assess all properties. Uh, that is not an easy task, that is a difficult task to figure out, uh, and understand the technological aspects of assessing. With regard to that, we have spoken to you about the possibility of, uh, having an evaluation service company provide you with some information, guidance, uh, perhaps put out an RFP to, to these companies that do the valuation services to provide you with guidance, so that you can consider, uh, you know, evaluation, or, or essentially an audit of your assessments to see if they are accurate, and it's, adopt an assessment role that is appropriate based on, uh, their knowledge of assessments. The other way, there, there's a second way that you can handle it when you are an assessing unit village, and that is, you just apply the county or the, the town role, and that's it, you can, you can do that, it's easy, you do that by resolution, if you choose to do that, that way you do not have a hand in it, uh, whatever the county or the town, I'm not sure which one in your case would, would provide the assessment, but you would apply that assessment, and that's it, your hands would be free of any role with regard to determining assessments for individual properties.
If I, if I could just interrupt, uh, Brian, the, the issue with adopting the, uh, the town's numbers, correct me if I'm wrong, is that if a resident wants to challenge those numbers, they go to a Board of Assessment Review that is essentially controlled by the town elected officials who make the appointments, is that true?
That is true.
So, we would, if we were to adopt the town numbers, lose control of the first level of appeal?
Correct.
And I, I personally don't believe that we should be giving up control of the appellate process. Obviously, the appellate process extends beyond the first level, which is the Board of Assessment Review, which now is the Board of Trustees. They are both the assessor and the Board of Assessment Review, which is required apparently under New York State law, even though it seems odd to me. So, would you, uh, unless someone feels very strongly about giving up control of the first level of review to townsfolk, I think we should focus in on our options in which we maintain control of the assessments of our own properties. So, going back to that, what, what, what are the options for that?
Uh, it's, it's simple, as we say, you, you do what you're doing now. Uh, but as part of that, it is our recommendation that you obtain a valuation service company to assist you to basically establish some kind of a baseline for the assessments to determine if your assessment role is proper now, or whether you need to modify, uh, individual lots or all of the lots in the village. Uh, then you'll have a, a good guide for going forward and being able to assess what happens as you move into the future, whether valuations increase uh, within the village for any particular reason, uh, but you'll, you'll have a good starting point, that's our recommendation.
But what if the law changes and the Board of Trustees pursuant to Scoofus's legislation can no longer act as the assessor, what are our alternatives there?
If you can't act as the assessor. If you can't act as the Assessor, they are going to have to provide an alternative. If it's the current law, you can adopt, again, adopt by resolution the town role, or you can cease to be an assessing unit. You could take that step, which you would have to do by local law. And that would pass it along to the town as well. So that those, as of now, are your current options. But I would assume any law that is adopted that would take you out of, out of the control you're talking about would include the next steps. So what it, what it said, what the law says now may not be what it will be after adoption of any law change.
The town has an Assessor, an individual by the name of Jim Davies, who does the assessment. Would we be able to hire our own professional Assessor, be it an individual or a firm, to conduct the assessments in the village, which would then be provided to the residents? And then they could appeal that assessment to a Board of Assessment Review, which might or might not be the Board of Trustees at that level?
That's the way it exists now. You can have an Assessor. I don't know, again, what it will be after a new law is passed. That would depend on, you know, what it says in the initial draft. And then after it goes through changes in committee, you'd have to see what it says at that point. And then, of course, whatever is adopted, we we'd have to deal with.
The initial, the initial proposed legislation simply prohibits the Board of Trustees from acting as the Assessor. Doesn't say anything else about a replacement. And you're right, we don't know, we don't know how trust.
You would have to see. It may very well divert back to the fact, it's back to exactly what you think may be the case, which would be in each instance to hire an Assessor. Or it may require you go straight to the town. I have feeling the former rather than the latter, but we'd have to see the law.
All right.
I think the last thing we want to do is give a power over assessing our own property. One of the issues that there might be legislation passed which forces us to act differently. But I think the discussion as presented is a little academic. We don't want to give it up. So, and it's working. If something's working, don't try to fix it. Right? It's working reasonably well.
I think, I think, you know, we have to think prospectively and get an, get an idea of what the alternatives might be. Apparently, the alternatives include an Assessor, a professional, an individual who who takes over the assessment process. It could theoretically, according to what I heard, be a firm that that gets involved in it. But if if and when the Board of Trustees loses the assessing authority, we have to be prepared for a replacement. I don't, I don't think the discussion is premature, but you're correct. The legislation actually says, as proposed, that it would not take effect until the first January 1st in the year after it was passed. So what we're talking about is if this legislation passes in the 2024 session, it would not be effective until January 1st, 2025. So we certainly have time. I'm not asking anybody for any decisions or to, other than giving an opinions and raising as an issue. That's what I wanted to do last month, and that's what I'm doing today. If, does anybody else on the Board have any comments about this? Or we'll move on because it is 9:15 at night. Nope?
I just had one question. Can you give an idea of cost of these valuation services or hiring an Assessor? What would that cost the village?
We, I think the best way to find out, and really the only way to find out, is to receive proposals or at least a conceptual proposal from one company and then figure out whether that's a cost that makes sense. And if it, if it's something you want to then put out for a full RFP, you should do that so you can find out, find out actual costs.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, Mr. Hanson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is Chris Hanson, 57 West Lake Road. A couple of questions on this. Do you have an idea of what percent of a village taxpayers is controlled by the village versus the town?
As I'm sitting here now, I can't tell you what percentage of the taxes paid by the villager are to go to the town. I mean, I I know my own, but.
No, no, I don't mean the, I don't mean go to the town. But in terms of the taxes that you pay every year, your property taxes, what percent go to the town that you pay that go to the town? That go to the county or I use school, excuse me, and versus the village?
Yeah, you're, you're asking me to break down the total tax bill that a resident would pay in terms of the recipient of that money? Is that what you're asking?
Right, roughly what it is.
Yeah, as I'm sitting here now, I apologize, but I I can't. I have some idea of my own, but I'm not prepared to give a, to give a percentage. I'd be happy to get back to you on that and and give, give the percentage at the next meeting.
So I think what it is, is roughly a quarter of a property owner's taxes goes to the village, a quarter goes to the town, and then a half goes to the school. And it's roughly what I believe it is for each person, give or take a few percentages. So of those, roughly three quarters of our property taxes are determined by the town Assessor. In use, just, just as a clear, if we were to go to the change, would we have any control? You said we would, we would not, you you don't want to lose the village having control of the assessment, correct? Is that what you said?
We, yeah, we don't want the village to lose control of the assessment of village property, which would then apply to the village taxes, which which are, you're saying it's 25%?
Roughly. Think, think about what you, think about the dollar that you pay or anybody else pays to the village and the dollars that you pay to the town and the dollars that you pay to the school.
Well, I think when you're talking about the town, you're also talking about the county, right?
Town and county, that's, that's one tax code, that's correct.
Yeah, okay.
And the town and county bill and the school bill are all determined by the town Assessor. The village Assessor only does one quarter. That's the first thing. The second thing is, in your, do you know what the variance is between the town Assessor's view of village properties and the village Assessor's view of village properties? I know John knows. I think that's something you should look into to see if there's a meaningful difference between the two.
So what you're saying is you believe that the assessed valuation on your property differs from the town to the village to the school? Or does the school rely on the town numbers?
No, the school relies on the town numbers. So three quarters of, roughly three quarters, two thirds, three quarters of our property tax bills is determined by the town Assessor. And only one third or one quarter is determined by the village Assessor. That's something to keep in mind. Now, therefore, most of our property tax bills, if we want to have any say, we have to grieve to the town. Okay, just, just keep that in mind as you go through this thinking process. I'm not telling you what to do, I'm just giving you some facts so that you know them. Next thing to look at is the accuracy of the town assessment versus actual sales. Okay, so I think that John Ledwys and the town's assessment are relatively close. I think that their differences are are not material. And I think that what's happened is, over the last 10 years, if you look at the assessed value that the town Assessor put on them and the actual sales, the numbers are surprisingly close and accurate. Okay? Next thing to consider is the fact that there is a mechanism for any taxpayer to to challenge their tax bill. So that mechanism is to grieve. The first one is for a, the minority of their taxes, they can grieve to the village. For the majority of their taxes, they can aggrieve to the town. And then, of course, there is the appeal after that. So, and then, you know, as you said, the, the, the issue of the village having control is that becomes a political issue, as, you know, as discussed earlier. So if the village is assessing, it's a political issue. So one thought here, as you go through this whole process, as you look the whole thing, is to consider just adopting the town. Because I believe that the town and the village assessment has been very, very close over the years. The final point to make here is that our village taxes are determined by the five of you sitting right there. That's what determines our village taxes. The town or the Assessor does not determine what we pay to the village for taxes. The only issue is that once you determine, once you adopt the budget, how much you pay versus I pay depends upon our relative assessments. That's the only issue. So just things to consider as you go through this whole process.
Thank you, Mr. Hanson. I I would note that I attached a, a, an attachment, I put an attachment on the agenda from a Board of Trustees meeting in 2007, which Mayor, former Mayor McFadden was involved in a similar discussion. So this has come up, this came up 16 years ago. So it's, it's an issue that that we, we've been talking about in the village for quite some time. And with respect to making any decisions, our hand may, to some extent, be forced sometime in in the future. So I I appreciate that explanation, Mr. Hanson. Thank you very much. Mr. Guzzoni, you have your hand up?
Yes, I do. And, Mr. Mayor, I, I'm, I'm coming to Trustee Tinka Shaw's defense. She's very upset that she's going to lose control over tax assessment. I was in the room in either 2017 or 2018 when Anna Tinka Shaw asked McFadden and the other trustees to lower her taxes by a lot. And she did. She lowered, she had the other trustees lower her taxes. She recused herself, really. But her taxes were lowered because the Board was political nature. Anna Tinka Shaw, shame on you, shame on you, shame on you. Thank you.
Mr., yes, absolutely, absolutely, Trustee Shaw, you are correct. Yeah, this discussion is, is, is at a level that I I don't think is appropriate. There's not supposed to be condemnation of anyone. I mean, the closest we came to that was me telling Trustee Shaw. She wasn't getting any apologies from me, but that's my right to say that. So, Mr. Guzzoni, I, you know, your comments have reached the level where I have to cut them off. So, John, would you please put him on mute? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Ten, Matt, Mr. Tenari.
Ryan, I support Brian's presentation. He mentioned third party evaluation. Independent individual assessment for the whole village. I would say, given the drama we're currently witnessing, any individual assessment would be a horrible idea.
I'm certainly not proposing a reassessment at this time of the entire village as an expensive proposition. But in any event, I think we've covered this as best as, 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 as much as we can tonight. Again, the time is, is, is late, so we will move on. And the next item, again, we, we're going to pass by approval of minutes. Fish stocking is kind of urgent, isn't it, Commodore? Because we got to get it done this time of year. Yeah, okay, all right. So let's talk about fish stocking. Is there a proposal? Does anybody know? I don't have it in front of me. Do you know, Commodore? What's the proposal? It's an $18,000?
It's gone up. For 10 years, they kept the price the same.
All right, we don't need to.
$9,280, something like that.
Is that per, for the village and the same amount for the club?
Correct.
Okay. I have not received a confirmation from the club that if the village.
The club is on board.
What? Club's on board?
I, I do believe the club would be on board to match the village in the historical fashion.
Okay, could you stay, who's talking, please?
I apologize, Gavin Maxwell, 6th Summit Road, Tuxedo Park.
Okay.
And the club's on board. I think we could probably do a little, lower number of fish overall, but I think we could do it.
Reduce the cost a bit.
Well, I think you, you, you pay by, by.
That, that would be, that would be acceptable because it's getting late.
Okay, all right. So the club's on board, how, how, any debate among the trustees?
No, I support the references that we were saying.
I agree on restocking. I agree on the club doing, joining as half and half. But I don't believe that Village Boat Club should contribute because they are already taxpayers.
I, I have spoken to Greg Libby about this issue. We had an extensive discussion on it. And he has told me that the Village Boat Club will not be making a contribution. Okay, that, that's, that's settled. We had this discussion several weeks ago. So, so in order, in order to move this along, I, I would make a resolution that we approve the, the purchase of to restock the lake trout, that the maximum amount to be paid, the maximum amount, subject to negotiation from that amount, will be $18,000 to be split equally between the village and the tuxedo club. Do I have a second?
I'm, I'm sorry, can I interrupt for just a second? Maybe this is nitpicking, but it, the quote, and you do have a copy just for your information, is. I'm, I'm sorry, I don't mean to be a pain. It's, it's actually $18,300. The $300 is the delivery fee. So I just.
Same thigh.
I will amend, I will amend my, my, my motion. My resolution is that a maximum amount of $18,300 be spent to restock Tuxedo Lake with trout and that whatever the amount is, if it can be negotiated, that's fine. It will be equally between the Village of Tuxedo Park and the Tuxedo Club. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Deputy Mayor Kasker. All in favor?
Aye.
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 It's unanimous, 5-0 Elizabeth.
Thank you.
All right.
Mr. Mayor, very quickly, can we get in touch with, like, Chairman of the Board of the Club to confirm the club's end of the.
Oh, yes, this is contingent on the clubs, the club contributing. Yes, absolutely. Yes, I will, I will speak to Frank Beverly.
Yeah, no, I, I, yes, I think provisionally, that's, that's fine. That number seems high. I, I will want to go back to the Board.
Is that you, Gavin?
That's correct, Gavin Maxwell.
All right, well, our, our resolution is contingent upon you agreeing to split the amount, whatever that amount.
Copy that.
Okay, thank you. Okay, all right.
Where is it?
To move, to move along, the next item is licensing of commercial landscaping companies. This is my proposal. I'll just discuss it very briefly. I included as an attachment to the agenda, a license, licensing from the Village of Garden City on Long Island. Essentially, and we'll discuss this further, I believe that the purpose of licensing is not only to collect the small fee from landscapers and tree trimmers, but more importantly, to set forth a series of rules with regard to tree cutting, leaf blowing, use of fertilizers, and other restrictions that we have in the village that we can impose on them as a condition of licensing. And if they violate those, any of those conditions, they are subject to a hearing in front of the Board of Trustees and revocation of that license if it's found that, in fact, they are not following the rules. I think it's important for environmental protection and conservation. In terms of the specific rules we set forth, I intend to have the Lakes Committee and the Tree Advisory Board and any other individuals who are interested in contributing what they think would be an appropriate rule. I mean, leaf blowing, you know, is not necessarily environmental, but it certainly affects people's enjoyment, enjoyment of life. So we'll move forward on that in the near future and we'll get input from all the relevant personnel and, and, and clubs and committees that would be interested in that. So nothing else to talk about that. Search Committee for the Police Chief. We have a wonderful police chief. David Conklin served the village with great distinction. But I'm sure most of you know that Chief Conklin moved out of New York to North Carolina earlier this year. And state law requires, and the chief is aware, that the chief be resident in the state. And as he is no longer resident, I made a decision to form a search committee in order to get applicants and make a decision about a, a new chief. I believe the committee should be three people. The person I want, I asked to chair the committee, subject to the approval of the Board, turned me down last night. So the other two members of the committee will be the President of the PBA, because we need someone with law enforcement background who can speak to the chief about those things that we as laypeople don't know. And the third member of the committee would be a trustee. As I'm sitting here now, are there any members of the Board who would be interested in serving on the Search Committee for the Police? Unfortunately, Deputy Mayor Kasker has to be recused on this particular one. So, Trustee Brook, Trustee Scherer, Trustee. So trustee Brooke, trustee Sherrod, trustee Shaw, would any of you be interested in serving on a police chief search committee?
And Chris needs to be recused. Uh, why? Because he, I'm sorry.
Chris has to be recused for reasons that I can't just, I cannot share in public.
Okay, I understand. That's fine. But okay, but that's fine. Um.
It has to do with running for the town council. That's all I.
Okay, which which, okay, that makes sense. Um, Tinko, Paul, you guys eager to step on? Otherwise, I will. I'm happy to be part of the search committee.
You know, I, this meeting has gone on for two and a half hours, or two hours plus. I I think it really critical that we have meetings focused on decisions we have to make as opposed to, you know, interminable discussions. I'm happy to be a part of that search committee. And, uh, you know, I do think that, uh, the current police chief has done a great job. And therefore, that search committee can do so in a stately manner. It's not a panicked process at this point, but I'm happy to do it.
Very good. Thank you, trustee Brooke. You'll be the you'll be the board member on the committee. We'll we'll revisit this next month when we have other members who are available. Extension of the Sterling carding contract. Uh, the previous administration did not renew the Sterling carding contract when it expired in November of twenty twenty-two. It was a three-year contract. The contract had provisions for yearly extension. It would have been an extension from November of twenty twenty-two to November of twenty twenty-three, and then we could have re-upped for twenty-three to twenty-four and twenty-four to twenty-five. Finding, realizing that we did not have an existing carding contract, I made contact with the carding company and the DeBella family that runs it in Slutzburg. I had a meeting with the DeBella family, including the owner, Robert DeBella, and his managing partner, his daughter Alyssa, and they have graciously agreed to extend the contract non pro tun. What that means is they will honor the first extension, which would, we would be in right now, from November twenty twenty-two to November twenty twenty-three. And then they will sign an extension from November twenty twenty-three through November twenty twenty-four. And I have provided to the board members, uh, through Jared, the village attorney, proposed agreement. I I think you've all seen it. Um, and my question is now, does anybody have any comments on this proposed agreement? Or can I move the agreement by resolution for adoption and receive your, um, authorization to sign that agreement? So we will have a carding contract, and we know that people's garbage and recycles will be picked, recyclables will be picked up as they have been over the last few years by Sterling. Anything from the trustees?
No comment. I'm good.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Um, I I'm make a resolution that the board authorize the mayor to sign the non-pro-tun extensions, the non-pro-tun extension of the carding contract from November twenty twenty-two to November twenty twenty-three, and also sign an extension for the the year from November twenty twenty-three to November twenty twenty-four at the same price that the contract stated, and it was a monthly price of fourteen thousand something. I don't know the precise amount. But do I have the approval of the board? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Uh, it's unanimous, Elizabeth. Thank you very much. Okay. The next item we discussed with the police chief was.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry to interrupt. Um, who seconded that?
Oh, anybody seconded it?
No, I second it.
Chris seconds it. Sorry. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is the the resolution to move the camera from the south gate to the main gate. We heard from the chief. Is there any discussion by the board?
Uh, yeah, I think we should just buy a new camera at a cost of, what, twelve dollars per household if we break it out evenly? I don't think we should start peeling away at our security. I mean, there's there was a reason that it was voted on unanimously when they bought both cameras, and I see no reason to skimp on that. Just get a new camera for the front and keep the one in the back.
Yeah, the cost of a new camera is what?
Thirty-nine hundred divided by three hundred thirty-three homes. We're talking twelve dollars.
Yeah, it's it's, you know, my sense is we have a proposal where it might be reimbursed. We'll find out in January. So we can make a decision to do on January, but I think it's appropriate that we protect the security of the village and just replace the camera.
Okay, so I'll I'll make a motion, uh, based on the, Christie, you have a position?
Yeah, I think, you know, one of the chief's concerns is that it wasn't budgeted and that we keep having to spend money on maintenance on this that isn't budgeted. So we should just plan on budgeting another thousand dollars a year. So every three years, if you have to replace a camera, we can do that. It unfortunately, this was a pretty significant investment that the village made when it built these cameras. I asked the chief for some statistics. They only ever arrested one person using it who had a warrant on him. He was a hell's agent angel. So if that's worth it for one person who didn't do anything, maybe, but all the other times, it's basically giving people a hard time for expired registrations, which I would hope the police let them go and give them an opportunity to fix it, but I've heard stories where that didn't happen. And that's unfortunate.
Trustee Sherrod, do you have any comments on this?
I I, we're we're talking small dollars here. My inclination is to just replace the camera. I know there's an expense to moving, uh, and, you know, uh, I I personally would just buy the new camera. And I, as my, as I understand, it's thirty hun- thirty-nine hundred bucks for the new camera versus twelve hundred to move the existing one and potentially replace it down the road. We should just buy a new camera.
Okay, that based on the majority, I'm going to make a resolution that you authorize the police chief to make a purchase, uh, of a new, uh, surveillance camera for the, uh, for the main gate. And that that purchase price shall not exceed thirty-nine hundred dollars. Do I have a second?
Second.
I I would just, I I just want the police to clarify that thirty-nine hundred, including tax?
Okay, are you there, chief?
I am here. We we are tax exempt.
Oh, okay.
But.
So no installation cost or anything?
But but I I would, I wouldn't put, um, I wouldn't put it at a maximum of thirty-nine hundred because I believe it was thirty-nine and change. I don't know the exact number right now.
So I I'll amend the resolution to make it four thousand dollars. And there's a second from Mr. Casker. Um, may I have individual votes? Uh, trustee Brooke?
Aye.
Uh, deputy mayor Casker?
Aye.
Trustee Shaw?
Aye.
Trustee Sherrod?
Aye.
Mayor's not voting on this one. Thank you. Okay. Next is Halloween. Every year, we celebrate it at, uh, Clubhouse Road. I'd like authorization from the board to do the same. It requires the deployment of one police officer to supervise the children and make sure everything is safe. Does anybody have any comments on the Halloween proposal for Saturday night, October twenty-eighth at five P M? Nope.
No.
Village. Uh, I I'm, I move that we, uh, that we approve the formal observance of Halloween and the deployment, if necessary, of one police officer for Saturday, October twenty-eighth at five P M on Clubhouse Road. Do I have a second?
Second it.
Uh, all in favor?
Mayor, mayor, this is the chief. Can I, can I interject, please?
Yes, of course.
Um, so we traditionally, we put two officers on Clubhouse Road, one on each end. The one officer was if we added another street.
Okay, well, then I'll amend the motion to include authorization to utilize two officers for that that period of time. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Yes.
Elizabeth. Okay, uh, some, uh, technical issues. Um, we apparently own some real property in the town of Tuxedo. John identified it, uh, at a location. Uh, it is a property for, uh, the purpose of our water, uh, service. And because we're a village, it's tax exempt from county property taxes. However, we have to apply every year to the state, the county legislature to receive that tax exemption. Some of you may have seen the letter from the county legislature making, asking us if we're going to reapply. We are. We don't want to pay taxes on that small piece of property for the water park system. So I make a motion that we apply for a tax exemption for the year, uh, twenty twenty-five. Is that correct, Elizabeth? Is it twenty twenty-five or twenty twenty?
Twenty twenty-five is correct. It is currently renewed through twenty twenty-four. They're a year ahead. That's the way they do it.
Okay, all right. The, uh, for the year twenty twenty-five, we make an application to the county of Orange for a tax exemption for that particular piece of property within the Tuxedo Park water system. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. All all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Trustee?
Aye.
Okay, passed unanimously. Um, I would like to table the authorization to hire part-time police officer, Stefan Christian. I I would like to meet with him before I nominate him to be an officer. Uh, so we'll put this on for November. The next item, accept the resignation of Bronwyn Roundtree. She was, as you know, appointed acting village justice under, uh, Justice Hassan. I'm sure she'll serve, uh, well as the acting village justice in the place of Justice Hassan when he's unavailable. But that leaves an opening on the planning board. We've all interviewed, uh, various candidates, and, uh, I have recommended Tom Birmingham for the vacancy. And, uh, I would move that he be appointed, uh, to the vacancy in the planning board effective immediately. And I would ask if anybody has any discussion before we vote on this.
I do.
Okay.
Um, you know it well because I've voiced it before. I think he'd be a much better candidate for the bar because he is retired and he's willing to put in time into the village. And the other three candidates all work full-time. So I think they, uh, would be much more appropriate for the planning board than somebody who could actually contribute every two weeks for a couple of hours.
Well, we don't have any vacancies on the on the bar at this time. Not anticipating any vacancies on the bar at this time. And I believe Tom is is a great candidate at this point for the planning board. He shows a lot of enthusiasm. He has expertise in in real, commercial real estate, and I'm I'm making a, I'm making a motion to to appoint him to the vacancy. Do I have a second from any?
I'm sorry to interrupt, but do, should we? I I'm just confused. Are we going to do a vote first on the, to accept the resignation of Rowan?
Yeah, okay, you're right. Technical. I'm I'm still learning some of the trade here. So I move that we.
Can I jump in now? Sorry. You don't need to do that. As as I understand, uh, he was a holdover. Uh, so there's no resignation that's necessary, nor under normal circumstances do you have to accept the resignation. Just needs to be filed.
Okay, all right. Then I I moved, I moved that.
For the record, so that's in our minutes. That's all. It's okay.
Well, I I move, I make a, I I move that we appoint Tom Birmingham to, uh, the planning board. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye. Aye.
Uh, four ayes, one nay from trustee Shaw. Congratulations, Tom, if you're watching. All right. Um, now we we move, uh, to, oh, before we get to this item, let's let's take care of some administrative items on the first page. Approval of meeting minutes. Has has every trustee had the opportunity to review the minutes?
Yes.
Yes?
I have not. I'll abstain.
Okay. Um, trustee Sherrod, have you had a chance to look at the minutes?
I have, yes.
Okay. And I I would make a motion to approve the minutes of the meetings of September twentieth, twenty twenty-three, uh, and October second, twenty twenty-three. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by trustee, by deputy mayor Casker. Uh, all in favor? Uh, trustee Brooke?
Aye.
Trustee Casker? Aye. Trustee Sherrod?
Aye.
Uh, it's four, yes, and one abstention, one abstention. Okay. The last, the last item on the new business agenda is, uh, an issue of which I discussed earlier. I have to recuse myself as I'm the target. So I'm going to leave the room.
Mayor, I I think, uh, we should table that until after executive session.
Yeah.
Is that, is that, is that acceptable?
Yes.
Okay, then we will table that. Um, the by by consensus of the four trustees, I don't have any, uh, position on that. I'm not permitted to. Uh, and then we move to audit of claims. Elizabeth?
Yes, I'm sorry. So for the general fund, uh, we have claims in the amount of two hundred eighty-one thousand six hundred thirty-nine dollars ninety cents. The sewer fund claims were ten thousand three hundred ninety-four dollars and eighteen cents. And the water fund claims were forty-two thousand two hundred twenty-five dollars and seventy-eight cents. And just for the record, the reason the general fund claims are high is that we made a payment, uh, we make one big payment a year to the retirement fund. And that's was this, that's what this was.
Thank you.
Uh, I'm sorry. I'm just, um, the, um, the, those are in your pile. Can you sign them, please?
Okay, I will, I will sign them. I will sign them. I think we had a, we had an email about this.
Yes.
Budget transfers, any budget transfers we should be aware of?
Yes, yes, please. There's this one budget transfer. Um, I'm going to, uh, request permission to transfer a hundred ninety thousand from appropriated fund balance to legal fees, uh, in the general fund.
I'm not going to comment on that. As deputy mayor, uh, it's up to you.
I mean, Elizabeth, we don't have a choice. We got to pay our bills, and that's.
Well, yes, that's exactly right, unfortunately.
What fund is it? The appropriated?
Uh, well, yeah, the, um, legal fees, we budgeted a hundred and forty thousand for the year. We we've already gone over that.
Right. Where do you want to take the money from?
From from the appropriated fund balance. It's about two million dollars.
Okay.
And it's normally, I try to pull a little here and there because there's usually some room that you have to play with, but this is a very large number. I spoke with the accountants about it, and this was the, they told me that I could do this, you, as long as it's authorized by you. It's just such a big number. I don't know where I could get it, pulling bits and pieces from the, uh, budget, not at this early in the year. If that makes any sense.
Yeah, you need a motion to make the transfer?
Yes, please.
Motion to make a transfer of a hundred ninety thousand dollars from the fund balance. Is that correct?
Uh, from the appropriated fund balance, yes, to the legal fees, one four two oh point four.
One four two oh four point four?
One four two oh, which is legal fees, point four, which is contractual.
Yeah, it's a one four two oh point four, legal fees contractual. Can I get a?
That's correct.
All favor?
I'm sorry, who seconded?
I did.
Oh, thank you.
And four?
I'm four.
Aye.
I'm I'm not voting.
Not voting. Not voting as a mayor.
Mayor's not voting.
Otherwise, four trustees.
Thank you.
All right. We now have time, um, at ten minutes to ten for further public comment. There's, yes, Mr. Lynch, please feel free. You have three minutes.
Uh, I was misquoted this evening. I encourage everyone to watch the bar videos. They speak for themselves. Tuxedo of yesteryear was in reference to bathroom deals. I stood before this board last meeting and spoke the praises of Christopher and Stephanie and their dedication to their work. And I asked you to extend their appointments. I hope they continue to uphold the design guidelines. Uh, you stated this evening that you asked me, excuse me, that you did not ask me to resign, correct?
Yes, that's correct. I I.
Your phone number ends in zero six three two, correct?
That is correct.
Uh, what was discussed for fourteen minutes when you called me on October tenth at twelve oh six P M?
Uh, I I will not, I will not answer that question in this forum. When I said I didn't, let me finish. Let me fin- I know, you're, the clock has stopped while I answer you. You put the question to me, sir. I didn't ask you to resign. I told you that you were being relieved. There's a difference.
Oh, so we did discuss my appointment on that phone call?
Yes, sir, we did discuss your appointment.
Start this meeting by saying we did not?
No, no, sir. I said I did not ask you to resign. I did not ask you to resign. There's a difference.
Could you please clarify what you asked me to do?
I didn't ask you to do anything. I called you to say that I was relieving you of the chairmanship.
Oh.
And more than that, I am not going to discuss in this forum. I would be happy to discuss it in a public hearing regarding your chairmanship, but this is not the appropriate forum because we have to notice that hearing, and everybody has to have a chance to appear, including yourself. So that is all I have to say. My only correction is I never asked you for a resignation.
Okay. Your email address is mcytrin@tuxedopark.gov, correct?
Please move on, sir.
Thank you. Uh, can a trustee please comment? Has replacing me as a chair ever been discussed via email?
The the board does not need to answer questions from the public.
Okay.
Sit down.
Apologize for lying tonight, Mr. Mayor.
When your three, three minutes are up, sir, you'll take.
Sit down.
Somebody else to speak.
Yes, I will. That doesn't answer my question.
I I, this is not the forum for a debate. I this is not the forum for a debate.
It's not.
It is called public. It is called public comment. You can say whatever you want. I'm not going to respond to you, Mr. Lynch, not in this forum. So.
I'll be submitting my phone records as well as deploy a request for the email in which you very much did discuss it. Thank you for your time, everyone.
Sit down, you fool.
Anybody else? Yes, Mr. Madden.
Wow. You talked a lot in your campaign about transparency. And you unilaterally basically terminated a chair of a board that had been unanimously approved, I think, two weeks before, maybe last. No public discussion. Best I can tell you, you haven't discussed it among yourselves. You said this isn't the right forum. Well, find the right public forum. I think you owe us an explanation. I think all of you owe us an explanation as to why a board chair who was appointed two weeks before unanimously was unceremoniously deposed without any public notice, without any discussion. Did any of the other trustees get consulted? You talked about advice and consent. Is that is that a transparent process? I think you owe it to the residents when you're making changes to major boards that are public facing to explain your rationale.
At the appropriate place and time, I will make my public comments. This is not it.
Okay, then the appropriate, then schedule it, please.
Okay, thank you for your comments. Anybody else? Yes, young man. Please step forward and identify yourself.
My name is Tate Sink. I live at 34 Tower Hill Road East. We are a very old town, so our roads were designed around horse and buggy, not car. This leads to a lot of different turns. One of these most dangerous turns for both drivers, bikers, and walkers is the turn overlooking the lake near Michael Habecorn's residence near Crowsnest Road. I have heard of instance of closed calls around this turn. And I would like to propose a multi-view, one of those um.
Mirrors.
Mirrors.
Yeah.
At the apex of that turn.
Thank you. That's a very good suggestion. It is. It's a it's a turn I use all the time as I come in from the South Gate to my house on Akoma Road. So thank you very much for that suggestion. Anybody else in the room want to make any comments? Anybody online raise have their hand raised? Mr. Guzzoni again. You you got less than three minutes because I think you got a little time in there on Tinker Shaw. Go ahead.
All right, all right. Um, I just want to.
Keep this comment respectful?
That's that's certainly an acceptable reminder.
I wouldn't have given.
Will will your comments be respectable, Casker? All right.
You just.
I am.
All right.
It's my.
Next, Vic. Mr. Maxwell?
It's my time. I get my three minutes.
Hey, good job, Tate. Love you, man. You're the best.
Mr. Mayor, I get to talk now.
Mr. Guzzoni, you.
Cool.
I will ask you one more time. If you speak, if you if you if you use ad hominem attacks or personal attacks on any members of the board or any members of the public, you will be silenced. If you want to keep it civil, keep it civil, and you will be allowed to speak. That's my ruling. Go ahead, sir.
All right, I get three minutes. Thank you. I want to speak to the appointment of trustee Brooke's girlfriend. The trustees wish to hire her as special counsel to harass me and my family.
You're done.
This is not against. This is against New York State law.
He is not. He is. Just stop for a second. Your time is your time is suspended so I can answer this question. I cannot speak because I have an official position in the village. It does not mean that someone who's a litigant. And that litigant, we heard from from Mr. Lynch that Victoria is a litigant. And if Victoria got on the screen and wanted to make a statement publicly, she's permitted to make a statement publicly. So he may.
He claims to be a public.
We're not going to debate. We're not going to debate that point, Matt. He gets his three minutes like everybody else unless he's uncivil or or says things that require me to cut him off. I I heard that. I didn't know where it came from. If, all right, he was if it came from a Mr. Guzzoni, that is not appropriate. I will allow him to continue on the issue he's discussing. Go ahead, sir.
Well, the trustees under New York State law cannot appoint or hire any village counsel or any other person to work for the village. The appointment is reserved only for the mayor. The trustees can either approve or disapprove the appointment. Therefore, if the trustees insist on hiring special counsel to harass me and my family further, I would like to the trustees to know that any legal fees that we incur were going to come after the trustees personally. Last time that we won, we did not collect legal fees from the village because we were being nice. This time we're not. We're coming after the trustees personally if they illegally have Alyssa Gilbert come after me and my family. For starters, trustee Brooke is highly conflicted as he lives with Alyssa Gilbert. Secondly, Mr. Share is also conflicted as Ms. Gilbert similarly represented him. And we do not know who has paid for Mr. Share's legal services. His vote would also be a quid pro quo, especially if his legal bill was not paid for and she waived her fees for him when he represented when she represented Mr. Share's campaign. Given these unwavable conflicts of interest, and in the event that the trustees insist on hiring her, it leaves less of a majority of the board. There's simply no way Ms. Gilbert can represent the village of Tuxedo Park in the current litigation. She has already started one lawsuit against me and my family claiming she represented the village. She purged herself, swearing she represented the village when she did not. She was thrown out of the Orange County Supreme Court. This happens again. I'm coming after the trustees.
That's it. Cut him off. I'm sorry. That's it. All right. Okay, anybody else wish to speak so we can? Yes, Mr. Witty.
Shoes. I appreciate so much what you guys and ladies do. It's it's breaks my heart, the conflict. The competition.
Darren, you don't get paid.
Thank you.
Yeah, you don't get paid. Okay.
Mark, I I I'm sorry. No one on Zoom heard what was just said. Um, so.
It was Josh. It was it was a compliment from Mr. Witty to all of us, including yourself as members of the Board of Trustees for the work that we do in spite of the fact that nobody gets paid. That's essentially it. Is that okay?
Yeah, thank you for that comment.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else on online want to say something? Anybody in the room or we can move to executive session, I think?
Yep.
Okay. Oh, yeah, trustee comments, right. You guys got anything else to add at this point in time? Okay, all right. So I'm going to make a motion that we move into executive session to discuss the following. The bar, 2220 2022 charges for town summer camp use of the Weewell Park, settlement of certain water bills, and appointments of Lake Wardens.
And can I just add legal matters?
Legal matters, fine. Thank you. Yes, of course. We didn't cover it earlier. And legal matters. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, it's unanimous. You got that, Elizabeth?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. The time is 10 o'clock. Wow, okay. We're going to go into executive session. We're going to use this room, which requires confidentiality. So everybody is free to return at the conclusion of executive session, but I can't tell you how long that will be. But seeing the hour is 10 o'clock, I suggest you all go home and watch our return on Zoom.
You should open up a bar now.
Thank you all for stopping.
Yeah, thank you.
Sure.
Who is Gavin? Call for the club.
Gavin Maxwell. You. Matt will tell you. I don't know.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay.
Can can we can we stop recording? And just so you know, your mics are live, so.